Come on.
Hey.
Eching is in here somewhere. Oh, there you are. Sorry. Okay. So, um, let's see, Taylor, if you would be so kind as to push the record button.
Recording in progress.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February sixth, twenty twenty four Winchester Planning Board Meeting. This meeting is recorded. If you do not wish to appear, it's recorded by via win cam. Thank you. As always, win cam. And via Zoom, if you do not wish to be on the recording, please turn off your audio and your video. Uh, so we got a full house tonight, so why don't we get started? Roll call vote, please. Carrie Layton.
Present.
Uh, Eching Scott.
Present.
Nick Rosatos.
Present.
And Sally Dale.
Present.
Thank you. And we are joined this evening by Taylor Herman, our town planner. Um, let's see, I know Matt Schuman, our town engineer, Nancy Fulkary, our recording secretary. And, uh, a number of people related to the waterfield project as well as members of the public. So thank you all for being here. So first order of business are updates. Uh, we will be continuing our hearing on the Waterfield Special Permit CBD Number Eighteen. Um, at seven thirty. Um, that is going to hopefully this evening, we will, our plan is to reach a decision on that permit application. Um, and then if there is time left over, we will dive right back into our MBTA three A and North Main Street zoning work. So, uh, that's our schedule for this evening. And let me get to updates. Does anyone have any updates for the board from the board for the board? Taylor, do you want to start?
Um, I don't actually think I have any updates. Uh, I haven't been shared since last, since last week, um, for I guess for anyone in the board, we're, we're trying to schedule a Z-Rack meeting. Don't even review advisory committee meeting for next week to go over the, uh, our first draft of the zoning amendment, but, uh, I think that's the only thing that I have, uh, for, for right now.
Um, I think we are also planning on having another public hearing towards the middle of February, which we have to get cruising on. Um, and we also had a, our, our, I think our, our first, um, sort of outreach to town meeting members last week, we sent out something on, um, what three A is and what our, um, activities on North Main Street are in preparation. We have planned a, a number of articles written by other board members as well as by the planning department to go over some of those, the vital issues on those. Um, anything from the rest of the board?
I, I just had a question. Um, and this is not to sort of castigate anyone, but I'm just wondering, um, since the documents were ready, I guess a reasonable time before the meeting. What, what, what could have been our options? Um, and, and I guess I'm just coming from the perspective that I haven't really had a chance to review them. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll look at them, but it's, it's sort of, it's sort of late in the game. And I'm wondering if, um, and I'm not, I, I, and I know that they are probably hard to get all together. I mean, it was, it's, uh, but I'm wondering if it would have been an option to postpone the discussion until the board had had enough time to really go, go through the, the documents.
Um, Nick, could you say which documents you're referring to, please?
Uh, the, I guess the ones for tonight, the packet.
You're talking about the ones for the, um, water field?
Yeah.
Um, so the, the ones, so the packet, I mean, I know we received some of them last week. So for instance, um, I, I believe I, there was a circulation of some of the conditions last week, I believe. Um, I don't know what they all are. I don't know that we have it on our time schedule in order to delay this much further because, um, Civic.
I figured there's some good reason, but I, I just thought it was, I, I thought it bared some discussion, um, in terms of, um, you know, whether, you know, you know.
Why, why don't we take that up when we?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we want to take that up when we, when we open the hearing?
I, I don't know if I want to make that much of an issue out of it. Um, but, but I think just internally in, in going forward, um, uh, I, I, I think it's probably a good idea to have the documents the Thursday before the meeting, you know, the way we had done before. And if we don't, maybe there's a, a, a backend release valve, but we say, okay, we'll, we'll just, we'll just take it up at the next meeting. Um, and I mean, I don't know, maybe it needs to be taken up, but you may, I, I don't know where it's arising from, but it just struck me, uh, as something that we probably would want to, uh, uh, address. Um, um, and then, you know, if you tell me, well, we don't have time. Uh, I would think we would, we would have some time. I, I don't know what's causing us not to. I, I, those are my thoughts. Um, so, uh, if, if someone wants to address it at the meeting, then that might be helpful.
Okay. Um, I, I just, uh, I think that's, that would be a, something to talk about. When we open the meeting.
I, I, I mean, we, we can certainly continue, we can certainly talk about it. I'll, I'll just say, Nick, from the, the, the reason why things probably feel a little maybe rushed is because the developers need to submit, have the final decision or, uh, for their submission in order to get financing before the end of next week. So today was really the the, the last day that we could reasonably help them achieve that. Um, so it's kind of a time crunch for everyone involved and we all recognize that, but it's, it's mostly because of the financing.
Okay.
And we, we got some of the, some of the final reports came in last week, so they had to go through review and response from the developer. Um, the, the list of conditions was submitted to, um, Town Council mid to late last, I think it was Wednesday, Taylor, did I get that right? And so then that went back and forth, um, between Town Council and various parties to make sure that it was reasonably correct. Speaking of which, is Jay on with us tonight?
Can I comment?
Yeah, I just wanted, if we don't have Jay here, we definitely need to have Jay here. Maybe he'll show up at seven thirty. Uh, sorry, who is that? I've lost sight of everyone. There's so many people.
It was Sally.
Oh, go ahead, please.
So I just want to say that one of the saving graces of the last week is that there was very open communication between Taylor's office and the whole planning board as these, um, important documents evolved over the last several days. Um, and that would be the, um, conditions for this project that we're about to talk about. And, uh, the drawings that came in this afternoon. It's great that Taylor was able to make copies.
Yeah, I, I think Taylor's done a great job, and I, I don't want to suggest otherwise on, on that count. Um,
It's been a rushed project for the reasons that you have cited, and it's been a, it's been, it's been a need for the planning board to be very nimble about getting their homework done every day. So that's what's happening.
Um, okay, are there any other updates from the board? If not, I'm gonna, oh, I don't have my phone with me. I think I would really love to have Town Council with us as we begin this. This, so let me send him a text.
Yeah, I need to be here. Did we have minutes?
On route. I'm not sure I actually have his.
No, no minutes tonight.
No minutes tonight. I do. Okay. Just hang out for a few minutes, everyone. Appreciate your patience.
I can start doing some logistics here. And anyone from the development team or anyone from there who'd be presenting tonight, can you raise your hand so that I can give you speaking privileges, please? Okay, I think I got everyone. If you're unable to, um, speak when you'd like to, just raise your hand again, and I will, uh, I'll, I'll unmute you.
Yeah, just so everyone knows, we, I don't know if we'll have a lot of time for extra public comments this evening. We certainly have um, gotten a number of comments over the last few days. But I don't know, we have a fairly compressed schedule, so I don't know if we'll have time for public comments. Um, we did get a letter from the Affordable Housing Trust this evening or this afternoon from the Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, who is in favor of it. Um, I think we got a, we got a letter. Taylor, you keep track of these better than I. Do, do you want to go through a quick listing of? Or maybe we should, we should really wait until the hearing starts. I apologize. I shouldn't. We've got two more minutes and I have not yet heard back from Jay.
And yeah, it is, it is my understanding that you, you do have to open up for public comment.
Yeah, I know. That's, oh, there's Jay. Okay. Yeah. And I just realized that I was trying to find some way to fill the time.
You can put a limit on it, but.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You do, but you do have to allow it.
Yes. Oh, I see what you're saying. Um, well, it's depending upon what part we're in the public hearing. Um, we may be on the, the part, um, where we're for public comment. Um, we've had public comment opportunities for all of the last many meetings. So when we get to the decision phase, um, I think the board can determine whether they want to listen to some more. Um, okay, um, why don't I declare it, um, close enough to seven thirty? Um, was there a motion from the board to uh, continue or I just open up whatever we call it, the, um, hearing on the, um, waterfield lot proposal CBD number eighteen?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second, please?
A second.
And let's do a roll call vote. Sally.
Hi.
Uh, Eching.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
And I say I as well. Um, welcome, everyone. Um, and, uh, we've, everyone is here. So this evening, um, I think what we're going to do is we're going to hopefully go through a fairly linear process. And, um, so what we have before us are, um, we have the Stormwater Peer Review, which has been, the final report has been submitted with a response from, uh, Civic and Causeway. We also have, um, the final, I wouldn't call it final, but we have the, the formal report from our, um, design consultant, um, Dennis Carlon, as well as responses from the developers on that. Um, then we'll go through those two, and then I think the board may have questions or to have some discussion. And at that point, I think, uh, the next step is to go into deliberation and to move through the various parts of the zoning bylaws. Um, and make sure that we, uh, consider every point upon which this permit rests. Um, look at, um, what the waivers, the requested waivers are is, and, um, then look at conditions. So um, why don't we start with, um, the Weston and Sampson um, Stormwater Review? And is there someone from Weston and Sampson who's going to be doing a short presentation on that?
Caroline's here, and I think she's muted.
Are you? Yes, we cannot hear you. Or at least you're not saying anything. Are you saying anything?
She is.
Yeah, we, we have, you have audio problems somehow.
Taylor, do you need to unmute her?
No, she is technically unmuted from the Zoom end. I think we've got.
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll, we'll figure it out. Yeah, you can hear now.
Yeah, sorry, just the headphone at you on my end, I guess. Um, hi, everyone. I'm Caroline. I'm with Weston and Sampson. I was part of the Stormwater, Water and Sewer Peer Review Team for this project. Um, I believe you've heard from my supervisor, Jerees, at past meetings, but just to give a little overview of where we stand and where this project stands, we submitted an initial peer review in November, outlining some concerns with the stormwater system that was proposed at the time. Um, we went back and forth with the development team and met with them in early January, and they submitted a response in January um, that addressed the majority of our comments. Um, there had been kind of a overhaul of the design, both in response to the Stormwater Peer Review as well as Fire Department and public safety. Um, and we went through the response to comments that we got from the development team and kind of line by line decided if further follow-up was needed or not. Um, at this time, we feel that the design substantially meets, um, Winchester's and the state's stormwater requirements are one point of ongoing concern that we've recommended be included as a condition is that confirmatory test pits be confirmed, be performed, sorry, before uh, construction begins, just to confirm the infiltration rates that were used for the stormwater design. All the other items that we outlined in our initial comment letter, we feel have been addressed. Um, there are a couple of minor inconsistencies that we still notice that we feel can be addressed as part of final design after approval.
Okay, um, Matt, uh, town engineer, do you want to, um, make any comments?
Sure, we provided a memo, I think, last week. We, we also re-reviewed the project. And, um, you know, I, I, I will say our comments were kind of fine-toothed combs, so there were a bunch, but they were very minor. You know, the majority of them are minor in, in, um, substance and could be, uh, addressed during building permit phase. Uh, we also had included in that memo, uh, some proposed conditions, which were italics in that memo, and we did work with Taylor, uh, the Civic Design Team and our legal counsel to have those codified in the, in the draft, this, uh, draft conditions.
Okay. Um, thanks. Anyone from Civic or Causeway want to speak to the, um, Stormwater Review?
Um, we, we have our civil engineer on the call here, Michael Laham from Horsey Witten. Um, uh, I would, I would just note that um, we, we reviewed the proposed conditions that engineering sent over, and I think we were generally comfortable with them. Um, but Mike, if you have anything else to add, go ahead.
Um, yeah, thanks, Sam. Yeah, Mike Laham, professional engineer with the Horsey Witten Group. Um, I'd say that, uh, Weston and Sampson summarized it pretty well, and I expect that we'll have, you know, ongoing coordination here um, with the town engineer, and there's a couple minor comments that remain in the Weston and Sampson letter that I'm confident we can address as we work through the, you know, the final construction drawings. Um, and, you know, similar with the, the comments from the engineering department. So, yeah, I, I think that's, I think that's it.
Uh, okay, um, are there any, uh, comments or questions or concerns from the board? Just yell out if you have any. Well, if no one else does, there are a couple of points, and I was going through the, the Stormwater Review, and these are, there are a couple of things, then Matt, you can tell me whether these are included in your conditions. Um, and there were just a couple of things which, uh, don't, for instance, um, let me see if I can find it. Um, uh, on page nine at the bottom where it says, it's talking about the Ralls rates and the HydroCAD and a bunch of stuff I know nothing about. But at the bottom, it says, Rook McMenon, the performance of confirmatory test bits be included as a condition of project approval. Um, Matt, can you confirm that that's in your set of conditions?
Yes, uh, that was condition number six, the draft condition.
And then, um, I know there's, there's places in there where it talks about final project design, and I presume that's going to be, you know, construction right before perm, per, build, building permits?
Uh, I, I'm not sure if that's for me or for Weston and Sampson, but
I'm not sure who it's for.
Yeah, typically final, a final design would be prior to issuing or prior to applying for the building permit. We, you know, they would be wrapping up all the loose ends.
Okay, cool. Um, and so there are a number of them that are essentially sort of, um, there's one at the top of page fifteen which talks about, um, invert and top of pipe elevations for the MWA sewer main prior to project approval. That's the last sentence in the first paragraph on page fifteen. Is that something that's in your conditions?
Yeah, so we incorporated that in, um, like, condition number four, which just refers to them obtaining the MWA permits. Okay, as part of that permit, they would, you know, MWA would be reviewing and, um, you know, confirming all of those things. So we're comfortable with that.
Okay, and I apologize for not, uh, being able to put, to, to draw lines between these, between your conditions and these. And then on page eighteen, um, a con, con creation of adequate separation between proposed Danish infrastructure and existing sewer main should be provided prior to or as a condition of project approval. That's the last sentence in the WSE response at the top of the page there.
Yeah, so that's, um, included in, in condition number seven, adequate separation of utility shall be provided. So I'm uncomfortable with that as well.
Okay, then those are the only comments I've had, and, uh, a little bit of bike shedding on my part, but, uh, that's, um, so if there are no no other comments, then, um, I think the next thing we've already gone through, I see in our packet, the next thing in our packet, there is the tool design memo. But we've already gone through, um, the tool, the traffic, um, uh, study last time we met. So at this point, why don't we switch over to, uh, a report from our design consultant, um, Dennis Carlon, as well as the, and I think that's, um, right after the tool one in the packet. So I see it as page forty of forty-nine. And, um, I think these are, um, I'm not sure how to, I don't, we don't have Dennis with us tonight, do we?
No.
Okay.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, um, so why don't we, um, why don't we scroll? I think it might be most of the, um, I don't think any of this is, I hope none of this is really a surprise to the board. I think this is a uh, more detailed description of what Dennis presented to us in his sort of informal comments that he made when we last saw him. Um, anything in here that the board, um, since we don't have Dennis here to go over this, anything here in the, that the board is surprised or is new to them about what's in this document?
Yeah, when you see this document.
I'm talking about the, um, the Carlon and Associates, the, the memo that's, that's on our screen right now, dated January twenty-second.
Right, so I think we saw this document even maybe shortly after our last meeting, right? It was sent to us and we were able to look through it.
Right, and anything of note that you have?
No. No.
Okay. Um, so why don't we then, uh, we do have a response from, um, Civic and Causeway folks. So if you guys want to, um, go through your responses, I think that would be appropriate.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, we do have Joe Haskett from Union Studio Architects, uh, who has a a more visual presentation of our responses. Um, so I'd like to turn the floor over to him to, um, to go through those.
Thank you, Sam. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Let me, uh, share my screen. All right. How about now? Can you see my presentation? Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you for taking the time. I appreciate it. Um, we thought we put together a visual presentation of our responses for the Waterfield, uh, Lot Development, redevelopment. Um, again, I'm speaking on behalf of Causeway and Civic, which is a joint partnership uh, for this particular redevelopment project. Uh, my name is Joe Haskett, Principal at Union Architects. Um, the agenda here is just basically our responses to Mr. Carlon, Carlon and Associates, uh, from his memo, his design, pick, design peer review memo dated January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Uh, and the way I've set this up is just basically to, um, run through, um, on a comment, like, by comment basis and providing some, some, uh, visual presentation to it. So comment number one, uh, Mr. Carlon entitled A one hundred basement floor plan. Uh, and again, I should note the comments that I have in here, there's a little asterisk. I've summarized his comments. These are not verbatim. We would have to refer to the, um, to the actual memo, but, um, I pretty much capture the intent, uh, and wherever I could, I tried to make it, uh, an exact quote. Uh, but basically, A one hundred basement floor plan is titled, as the first comment was, if mechanical ventilation for garage area is required, it should be well considered. Um, we have been able to make the first floor of the garage what they would consider in the code an open garage, meaning that there is no mechanical ventilation required. Uh, however, for our lower level, uh, there is no exterior perimeter, so we do have to mechanically ventilate it. It's a good comment by Mr. Carlon, um, to be considered about how this, you know, venting is, is exhausted. Uh, so we've worked with mechanical, with the mechanical engineer to locate The mechanical ventilation away from, you know, high view, view areas or view corridors from the front in this area. And we're able to put them in the back and tucked in to the area where we have our turn, our turnaround. For the fire truck in this particular, so those will be, those will have very minimal visual impact, excuse me, to the exterior of the facade. And we feel works, works very well in terms of a design standpoint. So that, and again, if the board has any questions as I'm going, I'm just going to run through these rather quickly. Feel free to stop me at any moment. Comment number two, L one oh one, the landscape plan. Recommend replacing sidewalk along the face of garage with a planted zone. Replace one or two onsite parking spaces with planted trees. So in this particular area, if you can see the green area. That was what we had previous, previously proposed as a sidewalk. We've taken the recommendation to heart and have made that a landscaped area. In terms of comment number two. The development team would, would welcome replacing parking with more green space, but. We would have to defer to the select board regarding any reduction of parking requirements as set forth in the LDA. Third comment, L one oh one, oh, I'm sorry, this is the same comment, but I just, we did a couple of renderings to try and visually. Demonstrate our, our proposed condition or our, our response to the comments. So in this particular area, this was a sidewalk, we're proposing plantings here that can kind of have kind of commensurate. Design with the, with the architecture along with the ground plane and along with the MBTA. Parking area softening this edge as per Mr. Carlon's comment. Again, stop me if I'm going too quick. Next comment, enhance public arrival and safety. This is kind of more at the forecourt of the building. The comment was replace pavement with pavers to enhance importance of pedestrians at station arrival point. This is the previous design, just wanted to demonstrate that we had pavers in the front forecourt. On Waterfield Road, Mr. Carlon is, is talking about this particular area here. Although this is our proposed drawing, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, this, we didn't have paver in this particular area. This is the proposed condition. So what we're, what we're proposing here is we've updated the entry to basically continue this kind of materiality of paver. Across the entire frontage of the site. One of the things we've done is use this, this particular curb area here to align. To provide some geometry of where we, where we dedicate that, that paver line coming across. And we feel that this would, we thought it was a good comment. I think that by providing that paver materiality across. That, that is now read as someone coming in from Waterfield, that this is now. One, one project and not a, a difference between a parking lot, maybe a public parking lot and a private. Building, but now more of a singular project. And although this is, you know, these are, these are publicly accessible parking spaces. It is a private lot, but I think this makes sense just to make this zone. Have the same materiality so that we can start to talk about public versus private. Also give a little bit of a, a slowdown zone for pedestrians. So we, we felt that was a, a very good comment. And have redesigned accordingly. This is also a rendering that kind of shows. That demonstrates the paving continuing across this particular area. Aligning with the curb cut or the curb, I should say not curb cut, but curb in this particular area. And basically, you know, aligning with all the paver materiality on the forecourt facing Waterfield. Uh, next is a setback entry. The comment was, you know, to better define the area, what's the character and how is, is public versus private delineated? So our response again is kind of similar to the previous. We've continued the pavers across. We've also, in the areas where we have seating, we've started to better define that they would have. We, our original design didn't indicate that there would be backs on the particular seating. So we've updated the rendering to show that. And again, we're in, we're, you know, in schematic design. But as we move forward, we will refine these details, but this is the intent. Again, we thought it was a good comment to make sure that, that the seating is comfortable. And again, as we move through, we will, we will keep advancing the project and, and, and. Bringing it to Mr. Cologne for, for review. Next comment was the transformer. Comment was should be more shielded. By, by more, by likely more than proposed sumac shrubs. So what we've done is we, we actually dedicated. We've redesigned this early on to provide two spaces for this particular area while still meeting the LDA parking requirements. We are going to propose some green around the transformer. And again, as we move forward, transformers have a lot of regulatory requirements. They have clearance requirements. So we'll have to work with the local utility to make sure that we can, we can screen this, but we will. We agree, we'd love to screen that as best as we can. Again, just keep in mind, we'll have to work with the local utility to see what we can do. Uh, next comment is A one oh two, the second floor plan. Upper courtyard terrace is presently non-designed. That was true, our, our, you know, our first submission. Didn't really show anything up there, but I think what we wanted to try and show in this rendering is the intent. And how we'd like to proceed. The courtyard will, will obviously be as an, used as an amenity, as a common space. For tenants in the building, but there's also going to be. Areas where there's going to be some private areas where tenants. Or units that front onto this particular courtyard, but will have a private zone and that private zone will. Be separated from the public zone with a kind of a combination of planter with a fence. So the, the fence can provide privacy, but the planting can also kind of soften that edge between. You know, public and private at the, at the private level for tenants. And A two oh one, Waterfield Road elevation. The comment was this traditional facade is handsome and fits into the town center with one omission. Guidelines specify use of granite or stone at base of columns and windowsill. So it was a very good, a very good point by Mr. Carlon. And again, we were very early on in our design and. This would have been a detail that we would have, we would have eventually arrived at anyways in our construction documents. So we agree and we've updated the design to show that there's, there's going to be. Stone at the base as a transition from the ground plane to the facade, so the brick doesn't come all the way down. He's right, that's typical to do, and this will run for the full perimeter of the front building as well. And translate a little bit back as you go towards the rear of the building. A two oh one, West Rangeli Woods elevation. Uh, this is a typical comment on, for most of the, of the facades. Was further articulation needed along the clabberd in trim wall on this background facade? I showed this slide because it's commensurate of several comments that are going to be forthcoming. That were similar for these particular fa- facades. So what we did is we looked for. Particular places that kind of made sense where this articulation can happen. And the reason I show this particular floor plan is to show that there's corners where we bump out. So I think Mr. Carlon was on to something in the sense that we were already kind of trying to break down that long, that long facade. By providing bump outs which allow for a shadow line, it breaks down the scale of that facade. And then his comment was to kind of further dive in. It was an opportune time for us to take a look at it. And I just wanted to show you the, in plan. The areas that we are going to provide that articulation is at the bump outs and the corners of the facades. Excuse me. So as we move through this. Again, this comment is the same, this is kind of towards the Rangeli Woods. And as you'll see in the bump out area here. What we're starting to do is, is, and Mr. Carlon had, had mentioned this. Is basically to provide a span, a spandrel panel here, where we can have a non-clabberd. Basically a, a smooth finish material that, that starts to break down this facade. And provide articulation across the bump out here. And then there's another bump out here where we, where we create that detail. It breaks up the, the, the clabberd shadow line, it provides a different shadow line, and again, it, it responds to the articulation. That, that the, the peer reviewer was seeking. Similar to other facades along the A two oh two north, the church street facing elevation. Similar comment, I just wanted to show here that we're providing the same type of detail at the bump out areas here. And then furthermore, moving and you can see in plan along here where, where these elevations are. And then also moving along towards when I'm coining the alley facade, which is the bump out. We're providing that similar articulation here simply because it kind of philosophically goes along with the design moves in plan. Where certain masses are, are bumping out. So. We feel that we've addressed that, that comment, we, we thought it was another good one. And have addressed it, we feel in the, in the appropriate areas of the architecture. Comment, the next comment is an A two oh two south, MBT entry courtyard elevation. I think this is probably the, the, one of the larger concerns of, of Mr. Carlon. And I think some of the members of the board. The exposed concrete wall should be faced with the same brick as proposed on either side of the one-story portion of the garage. I know that we had, we had talked about some type of acrylic coating that we've used in previous projects. My office has used in other projects, even in historic conditions. But in speaking with the development team and, and ownership. We felt that after kind of studying it, that it would be appropriate to, to provide brick. And on the garage level. So we're proposing to take that recommendation. And continue the brick on the, on the garage facade that's facing the MBTA station. You can see that here. In this rendering. Building materials and color selection. This is a similar comment, the garage wall facing MBTA should be faced in brick. Just wanted to reinforce that we, we are proposing that. We agree with that. And, and we'll continue to design accordingly. Next comment, site building and lighting. The comments were publicly, publicly accessible entry road, MBTA courtyard area should use town street lamps. Private building area lighting should be really, related solely to the apartment building. Again, I think this one falls in the, we're early on in the design process. We hear the comment loud and clear, and I think the one thing that we would like to say is, as a development team, we'd like to better understand. The extent of lighting that the MBTA is going to provide in this particular area. And I think once we better understand that, we will provide the appropriate lighting. There's two concerns here that we have to balance. One is, is safety. Obviously, that's first and foremost. To brought, provide the, the, the appropriate lighting levels. The other thing is from an environmental standpoint, we want to be, we want to be considerate of dark sky requirements that we just don't want to overlight it. There's been a tendency, tendency to overlight certain projects and basically there's. An impact to the environment in a negative way. So we hear you loud and clear. We agree on the street lamp comment. But I think that this is, this is one that we'd just like to consider a little bit more and we, we don't really have anything to propose at this point. But the lighting will, it, it's always important for, for, for myself as an architect, lighting is, is key. But one that we will, we will definitely consider as we move forward. And then garage impacts screen interior lighting. At vents from exterior MBTA courtyard and surrounding private properties as much as possible. Resolve lower level mechanical venting if required. So. Apologize for the, the number of, of arrows in this. I think we're kind of banging you over the head on this one. But I think that this is, this slide is, is really just trying to illustrate that we're going to take into consideration any of the openings. That face this particular area and we would, again, it, it falls in line with the, the similar comment with the lighting. We want appropriate lighting levels. We don't want too much lighting spilling out. So if screening of, of the lighting from the interior, so it doesn't spill outside, is definitely something that we would, we would do. So that's just to highlight that we are aware of those areas and we'll, and we'll take them into consideration. So those were the comments that we had from, from Mr. Carlon. And just wanted to run through those and give you kind of a visual. Rundown of, of our responses. So feel happy to take any, any questions, but that's the end.
Uh, thank you, and I should note that Dennis Carlon is with us this evening. Dennis, I hope you heard most of that.
I did.
Is there, are there any areas that you, would, would you like to comment on the comments? Or ask any questions about some of the areas that weren't, some of your comments that weren't addressed?
Well, first of all, I go by Dennis. You don't have to call me Mr. Carlon. I keep looking for my father. And as I notified Taylor, I thought the responses. The written responses are right on the money. I think what we've been shown is a good response to those comments. The brick on the garage in particular, I, I think you all could tell that it. It just makes it a much friendlier place to be. And unites the two brick portions of the building. I, I do have two comments. I think it, or three comments. I do think it's important that you see vegetation as drawn. At the private courtyard level. From down below, I think it against, the implication here is that. That is in their thinking and I agree with that to soften. And make it clear that this is an active place up top. Even though it's private, so I, I salute that. The notion of. Cast stone at the base of the entry wing. I have to admit, I've never used cast stone. I don't know how, I know precast concrete. Is absorbs stains, especially salt. I don't know about cast stone. I know it's a, it's a good quality material, but that's something we could talk about in the future. There's. Nothing to hold back here. I'd look to the architects. And the development team to make sure that it doesn't get stained. Precast can look fine, but once it's stained, it looks terrible. But I know the architects know this, so I'm assuming that cast stone. Is actually a higher quality and hopefully not as absorbent. And I see. Mr. Haskett, just kidding, Joe, saying yes, so that's encouraging. And lastly. The gray painted wood. And black. Trim. I know this is preliminary. I hope it's a slightly softer gray, like a sage green that's up to the architects. But. Gray looks with, looks better in renderings than in reality. And there's many different kinds of gray, but that'll be studied in the test wall. And so I'm confident we will work that out. All in all. Building on what they presented, the development team presented last week. This is a quality product. And the town, I believe, should be very happy with it. So I, other than there could be a tree where the two bikes are stored. Within the orange oval, thank you, Joe. Which I would prefer, just because we are back tree light, L I T E. On this area way and the planted areas certainly soften it, but. Three dimensionally, we need to do better, but I congratulate the team. And I look very forward to further. And I look very forward to further development and seeing this project built. I think it'll be a winner in the town center. I also, by the way, would love to know more about the MBTA. I know nothing other than. The drawing I saw uh, of what they're proposing. And I know Joe and the development team will be inquiring on that. Uh, lighting, uh, signage, everything down the line because we might need to comment on that and um. In, in, we're doing one half of the side of this, but not the other half as far as knowing what's happening. So that's all I have to say. I'm happy to answer any questions, but uh. All in all, what you see in front of you is a wonderful addition. To Town Center.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Carlon Sun. I mean Dennis.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, so are there any uh, questions, comments uh, from the board?
I, I just had a, a question and I don't know whether this is the, the time to ask, but I, I'm just looking at the, the renderings look, look uh, really nice. Um, I, my, my first question is, is the brick. Either brick or brick facing, um, is it, is it, was it real clay brick or is it brick colored uh, concrete? And uh.
Real brick.
It is. That's great. Uh, I really like the wide cornice that's, that's here on the, on the brick areas. I really think it, it just is, is, is great. Is that overhang that you see, is that um, in proportion to what the real one is going to look like? I mean, will, will that be? Uh. Maybe eighteen inches or a couple of feet out? I would ha, is that, i- is that, uh, what, what's the actual measurement of the overhang?
If, if I understood, are you talking about this particular detail here?
No, the, the one, the one at the very top of, of both the front brick building, the wide, the wide cornice. Yeah, I think that really adds uh.
Yes.
A lot of style. Um, and it's, it's really nice.
Yeah, that's a, um, thank you. We appreciate a, a nice shadow line there. That's, that's, we are currently detailing that. That was, that's probably drawn right around eighteen inches.
So that, that's probably what it's going to be eight, around eighteen and, and as well as, as well as the tower. And then the, 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 the windows are, are, it looks like they're two over two, uh, two over two, which is really nice. And is, is that? Uh, a, as far as, uh, that's what they're going to look like with the dark, um, the dark frames?
Yeah, those are, that's one of the things where i- i- as a, as a passive house certified project. That's what we're looking at. We'd love, they, the passive house windows have come a long way with the, with the simulated divided lights, the SDLs in them.
Yeah.
But these would, these would, uh, these would be kind of a tilt turn window. But we would like to try and provide the SDL to articulate it, uh, so it's just not a blank window.
Okay, so they're not double hung, but, but they look, but they'll, they'll have that look.
Correct. Yep. That's the intent.
Mm-hmm. It looks great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Related question. I, I noticed that uh, unless you change the air conditioning system. Um, and maybe you just haven't added them. Um, there doesn't appear to be. Slots for air conditioning units. So it's an internal system. I thought I saw it earlier.
We did. Originally, we had a, a different heating and cooling system that has subsequently changed. To the point where the facade no longer has those grills.
Well, that's important. That's a plus. Thank you.
Um, I can go next. Um.
Please.
Okay, so I um, appreciate the new design and I think the focus on the. Waterfield facade as well as the MBTA facade and, and it really key. Um, and thank you. Uh, Dennis, for, for the comments about sort of wrapping it up. And, and covering the concrete with brick. And I, I agree, it looks great, especially from the. Perspective of on the street on Waterfield where that front brick area kind of connects. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Where it sort of connects and then sort of directs to the back tower brick. Um, but without dominating it, it, it's a nice material connection. Um. And if we could in our conditions, and I don't know if this is what, what is. Um, kind of appropriate, but if, if we could ask the select board to, in, in. The parking situation, if, it does come to, to pass that, you know, the parking is more than enough. And we are able to, you know, delete one or two parking spots for greener space that that could, that could be a consideration. I don't know if that, this is where we would. Put that in, in the conditions, but I, I would, I would um, be amenable to that. Um, and maybe you can respond later, yeah, but uh. Um, and then the green, the green space that's added um, is, is nice softening, even though it's very tiny, you know, um, little. Gutter-like thing, but the, the addition and the renderings of the, of the trees on, on the um. The outdoor patio for the private section is, is so lovely. I'm sure it's going to become a very nice space. Um, with, shilling with a little bit of privacy, but also adding softness to that, that whole um, section is, it's quite lovely. Um. The front, the front, um, if we could go to the front facade where the rendering um, shows the pave. The, the concrete pavers connecting. I just, I don't, I, I, maybe this is just stylistic thing, but I, I wonder why the concrete sort of, you know. Um, bisects the two sections. And I know that we lost a big chunk of the public space from the first. Um, iteration, I think you, that, that um, the town has, had selected where, where it was a true mu and it was a public space. Now it seems like that space has become inverted and become sort of the front part. And I think it's quite nice to use. You know, what the fire safety lane and connect it so that it becomes this flexible space. For, you know, kids to throw ball or something, you know, out there. Um, and, and it becomes this nice, um, wide. Um. In, um, almost like a welcome mat to, to the project. Um, but just curious, Joe, um, why, if there, there is a way to connect that, because it, it just seems like there's, there's the. Lifted, you know, pavers and then the pavers on, in the front. Um. You know what I'm saying?
Chairwoman Scott, are you, are you, can you describe that a little bit more?
Correct. Like that, tho- those pavers like get cut off by the sidewalk and then it.
Oh, here, right here. Yeah.
I know.
It's a, it's a good point. I think it's, it's kind of a gray area. I think that what we tried to do is. At some point, you want to try and very, be very deliberate about the pathway that you want people to walk on. And I think by keeping that sidewalk strong and firm, um, it really helps guide people along. I think our fear was, I think. One of the comments was to expand uh, the paver a little bit deeper. But I think that what happens is some wayfinding has to occur, um, rather than it just being, um. You know, as much as I love the Dutch vernouf, you know, where every, there's really no signage and everybody has to figure it out. I think in this particular area where we, where we, where we landed was to provide um, a kind of a clear pathway on the sidewalk. However, you know, those are details as we move along.
Yeah.
You know, we could study and, and we could take a look at. You know, that's, that's definitely something that, you know, you, you've, you, you, you touched on a gray area.
Right.
And one that we, you know, one we could look at.
Um, and one little gray area, I don't want to spend too much time on this too, is, is that point about the granite base and how, how, you know, um. Intentional it's been to, to wrap it around it. And then now the benches are, are um, brick um, in front. So, you know, the, the. Flipping of the granite touching the ground versus the brick touching the ground. It just, to me, it's like, it, it is a little bit funny, but that's, that's a detail.
It's a good point. It's a good point. One, that, to be fair and to be honest, that, 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 those benches and, you know, I think. Dennis, refer to him as Dennis, is the, is the, those, those areas need to be further refined. So. Um, your comment is duly noted and it's a good one.
Um, and what, just last thing about the plans themselves, and I, I just, I don't know if you have any of the um, unit plans, but I just want to note for some people who are watching. Um, that you, you had put in every single um, unit um, accessible. You know, five, five-foot tur- circles as well as in detailing the, the doorway widths and the ability for one to navigate these, every unit. Um, with a wheelchair. Um, and there are, there are very specific units that are wheelchair accessible bathrooms with the five-foot turnaround. Um, but every single unit has, has indications of that. And you didn't have to do that, but I really, really appreciate. You using that default um, and, and making each of these units highly accessible. And I, I appreciate that very much. Um, another point, and I, I don't know if you can answer for me. I was trying to see if every unit had a washer, dryer, um, accessible uh. Capabilities or if there were like a communal laundry space, because our town is notoriously um. You know, bereft of them or devoid, devoid of um, laundry facilities. So I'm just curious if each one had that capability.
So currently, the floor plan indicates um, washer and dryer in unit for all the two and three bedroom units. Um, we do not currently show them in the studios and the singles. However, um, that is, that is something that we, you know, could potentially consider with ownership to. Uh, provide in those particular units. However, for those units that do not have them, we do have uh, common laundry on every level.
Oh, I did notice that. That's wonderful. Good. I, I appreciate that too. No, it's, I think it's a really wonderful project and you guys did a, a great job with the design and, and very flexible and um, responsive to a lot of the comments from the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, anyone else from the board?
I, I, everyone's covered any comments I would have had and this project is really exciting and I think it's going to be a beautiful addition and a wonderful um, addition to the housing inventory. Is there any comment you can make that's so close to the train station about um, sound protection from the trains coming and going? Or, or the window?
Uh, yeah, I know. Absolutely. Very good question. Um, I think the one thing that helps us in this project is ownership is, is electing to pursue passive house certification. Um, so what that does is the standard for that requires a very tight envelope, which helps with sound first and foremost. Uh, it requires a more robust uh, insulated envelope, which helps with sound. Uh, and then the windows, the windows are your kind of weak point here. And again, with the passive house certification. The window that we would be required to put in here would be a triple glaze. And that would be typically what you would do in instances like this was to pay more of a premium to put in a triple glaze window. Um, and that really helps with the sound attenuation and to mitigate uh, the sound coming off of the MBTA. So. I think just with that as a baseline, uh, it's going to help immensely with sound attenuation.
That's great. That's, that's encouraging. Thanks. That's, that's it for me. This is, this is exciting.
Um, Sally?
Yes, um, I uh, agree with everything that's been said and I'm very excited, as, as Carrie said, for this building to be. Um, slowly coming into reality. Um, I want to go back to something Yichin talked about, which you can see in this um, view right here inside the circle. That question of whether you would continue the um, uh, p- pavers across the sidewalk there. As you're walking up Waterfield, um, no, you're, you're right, as you're walking up Waterfield Road. Um, or you're walking along there towards the front entry. And you had another view that was sort of a rendering perspective on this. That it wasn't this one, it was another view when you were making the point there, that one. Oh, go back one. That, that, there, this. So you've colored the sidewalk that same cream color. Um, so that it almost gives the impression of what it would be if those were the unit pavers in there too. And I heard what you were saying about, about, you know, it puts the emphasis one way or the other. Um, but where, oh, I see, because it is public parking when you go down, down the side street here, the side road. Um, I don't know, it still feels like it's more unifying to the town to have this all. Uh, the unit papers going all the way across. But I mean, you, you could convince me either way, but my first inclination is that they would cross the sidewalk, but. I, I think I should defer to others, particularly as not everybody in town is keen on pavers anyway. Although we have beautiful brick sidewalks. So that's one comment that I had. I am being somewhat indeterminate about, but I wanted to bring it, to say that I noticed it and. I just have, um. And, and I'm not sure how, how I would take it. The other question I had is why is there not another tree on the other side of the lobby door?
That is, again, I think that um, with what Chairman Scott said, I think we could, this, these are areas that we could definitely look at.
Okay.
In terms of, you know, is that sidewalk a paver? Is it not? I think we could definitely study it. And is there a tree, uh, you know, you know, definitely things that we can, we can refine as we, as we go forward. I think they're all good comments. Things that can, we could definitely look at.
So, and then as far as the elevations of the building, not the elevations, but the renderings, the color renderings of the, that primary facade there. I do agree with um, Dennis Carlon that the, the way he put it was, was intriguing to me that it looks better in a drawing than it does in reality. I'm not a fan of gray and there are so many beautiful hues um. Of earthy colors that you can use. Um. And I liked what he suggested about some shade of a green or something. I definitely recognize that there's a lot of sort of TBDs that will come back to the planning board. And um, with, to Dennis for assisting in this process. Um, and the, what the list that I made was. The, it was, um, oh, I noticed that the front building is full depth brick. And the sides and the tower in the back are veneer and, and along the parking garage faces veneer brick. Um, and I think that's fine as long as it's executed extremely well and it holds up extremely well. Um, and I noticed that you're painting the cornices. Um, and I. I, I was surprised to see that because that's a very difficult place to repaint. Um, and you might need to repaint in fifteen years. Um, so that was, I didn't know whether you would consider using something that had the color integral to the material. Um, and as far as the clabbered sides, I guess what I understand is that the clabbereds um. Can be pre-painted with the color that's baked into the clabbered material. So that painting is not um, as much of an issue. Um, and I just wanted to bring that up because I would like this building to um, be durable and not have to be repaired. Um, I mean, to be, to, to make it, make it through its um, years gracefully, I guess is what I want to say. Um, and then, um. I noticed that you did do a lot of really great work with what you call the spandrels and um, the uh. The trim for uh, is this area, there's two kinds of trim or two kinds of. Articulation that you're doing. There's one around the town, this front building here. And there was another one too. Oh, I know, it's the panels. It's the um, how did you refer to them? Painted woods spandrel panels. And then on this one, yeah, well, I guess they're all called spandrels. And so again, my, my comment about it being painted wood. Is that I hope they do a really good job painting it because it's going to be a difficult building to repaint. And I was surprised to see you referring to paint. Um, when there are so many materials out there where the color is, is anodized or it's factory applied or whatever. So it's just a wear and tear question I had. Um, but really, other than that, I absolutely love this project. I really do. I think it's great. Um, I think the bike parking is, you've done a really nice job of including as much as you can. I think it's a great conversation for the town. About how we can expand bike parking all around the town. Um, I think it's great that you've added green. Down towards the back of the building on the driveway side. Um, and I agree with Dennis Carlon's comment that the trees on the balcony, not the balcony, but the. Second story courtyard should um, be visible from the street um, to soften the whole view. Um, and um. I think that is what I have. I just think it's a great building and I'm really grateful that you've done so much work.
Thank you. If I could just respond to the comment on color, I know that Dennis had, had mentioned that. I think a couple of other people had mentioned. Color is, um, I think if, in my experience, if we ask ten different board members of any, any board, uh, we might get ten different opinions. Um, but I think that we will definitely study that. Um, and, and so we hear you. Um, but I think that we will definitely study that. Um, and and so we hear you. Um, and then also to your point about uh the different types of manufactured um materials with with uh prefinished paint on them. This would definitely be that. This would be something that where we would choose from, they have so many um color selections anymore. We would choose from that. Um, it's not only is it adorable, um, it just makes, uh, it's just cost effective, cost effective. To be honest, it makes sense. And there's just such a wide variety of colors. So we would use, we would choose from that palette. Clabbered and the um and the spandrel panel as well.
And as for the cornice, is that probably going to be wood?
It's right now, we're thinking it's wood, but there's different materials that we could look at potentially. Um, but your comment is a good one.
Well, you word I was looking for you used durable. So thank you. Um, I think it's great. Thank you.
Okay, I think I think I'm the last one. Um. So I had a very similar comments about um the pavers at the Waterfield entrance. And so I don't want to um belabor the point. Um, I'm actually kind of in favor of pushing the pavers further down the the into the parking lot. Uh, my concern is that they're just going to be seen as a minor speed bump and people won't really, as they drive in, they'll be driving over it so quickly, they may not notice it's there. Um, but I I do, you know, I I also recognize that you want to somehow indicate that the sidewalk is sidewalk and not a place where a car could drive, which would be one reason maybe not to put pavers across the sidewalk. I understand that's a complex sort of an area, but I personally would love to see pavers go deeper into the lot just so that people get, you know, as you drive in, you have a larger chance to notice them. Um, and this, you know, um, the other question I had is, is it required that the transformer be at grade?
You know, that's, that's a good question. Um.
Yeah, I can take that. What's that? I can take that.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's really dictated by the uh utility and if there is a surface spot available, then they will absolutely require it be to be on the surface, only in the public way on occasion that they put them under underground if there's no other space, obviously with in cities, et cetera.
And there's been, I mean, one of the buildings that that we looked at that, you know, the ten Converse actually had the transformers within the building. Um, they did have to do some engineering to get a a a floor, a a ceiling height large enough to accommodate that. Is that a possibility to sneak it into the building?
But we've, Dave, I could take that one too, but go ahead.
Yep.
Uh, I was, we've, we've had this particular issue. Um, what we find there, I think, uh, that you you hit it, you hit the nail on the head, the amount of height that you need to have so that they could, they could bring a large piece of equipment and and lift it up is one thing that is difficult to do. The other thing is just the blast wall configuration that you have to have for this.
Okay.
Um, that the amount of distance you have to create for it and then the amount of of construction uh that you would have to do for the blast radius starts to become very prohibitive for us.
I did not realize you needed to worry about the thing exploding. It's good to know someone's worried about that. Um, okay, well, if possible, if we can't bury it, I guess we can paint it maybe. Um, so where's your HVAC equipment? I think I may have missed it. You certainly don't have it up on the roof.
It is on the roof.
It is on the roof. Is it hidden in your towers? Where could you maybe show? Because all of your renderings show a fields and fields of of solar panels.
Right. You know, this this rendering is, I think it's a good point. It really kind of we probably, to be honest, didn't pay too much attention to that particular area, but in our roof plan um that we submitted, you can see the equipment and and since we have a lot of in-unit equipment, um, our rooftop is actually very devoid of a lot of mechanical equipment. Uh, we do have our um uh, we'll have, you know, condensing units on the roof for this. Um, and we'll also, uh, and we're having uh unitary ERVs within units. Uh, so those won't won't be on the roof. Um, but yeah, you're right, that that we should probably have a couple of pieces of equipment up here shown uh that we don't, but our roof plan uh does reflect um, the the amount of mechanical equipment. But with our s- with our strategy, it does allow quite a bit of room for solar panels on this roof.
Hmm. Um, okay, um.
Yeah, can I just open that one point about the roof?
Yeah.
Really quickly. So I think it would be really helpful for the planning board to actually see an illustration of what it's going to look like when the rooftop equipment that you settle with, settle on is what it looks like when it's on the roof. Because if it's tall enough to be visible from angles, um, it it would be worth talking about whether it needs any kind of screening at all. And I know that changes the massing of the building completely when you start doing that kind of stuff, but I just, I think that we should not leave it um, open like this, that, I mean, the question open, I don't mean the space open because it's really nice not seeing any rooftops. Um, but I think we do need to keep in touch about what, how it evolves.
We could definitely provide you um a a rendering that shows you that. I think also keep in mind that what we're showing here is, although this is a flat roof, we are, we are showing a parapet um simply because of the panels. Um, because if you didn't, we would have to put a railing up there uh as fall protection. So we go with the with the parapet, that helps with the sightline. And then the the equipment that we're going to have is is not going to be very intensive or very large. Um, but to satisfy your concern as we move forward, I am not concerned of of any sightline or any equipment shown, but we can satisfy the board's concern as we move forward.
Great. Thank you.
Can I, can I just ask one, one other quick question? Uh, as I'm looking at all these pictures, I was noticing the sidewalks and the sidewalk that's in the front that faces the the common, is that going to match? Is the town going to pave that with the with the bricks that match the rest of the brick uh sidewalks?
Is is that a question for me?
Uh, maybe.
I think we'd have to defer to Matt Schuman on that, maybe.
But are you?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, I think we were, you know, my my uh opinion was that I I think right now that's that area is concrete, so I wasn't asking them to to do brick. So we hadn't hadn't come up as a comment because it's it's concrete now, brick.
Okay, because because in front of the the building to the, I guess, to the right of the picture.
Yeah.
It's it's got, it's just, and and all the, all the sidewalk in that area is brick and when they redid the, I guess, the crossing way up by Church Street, they they did those kind of belly fronts in brick as well. So it was, I was just wondering if this is gonna gonna match.
I think that's, you know, something that certainly you could ask them to look at. I think uh, as I said, like right now, it's that it is brick in front of the other building, it's concrete in front of this area and con- I think the concrete continues down all along that side to the average John a lot and down to Mystic Valley Parkway. Um, so that's kind of what my thought process was.
Goes over the bridge and there's, I mean, there is brick going over that, you know, fur- fur- further down. Okay, I I did, I was just, I I was just curious because it uh, it would kind of be an outlier. Oh, Dennis has his hand up.
If I may, um, I I agree with what Nick just said. Um, and let's face it, the sidewalk's not going to change for forty years after this project. And right now, there, if I recall correctly, there's extensive driveway um, to the parking lot area and the MBTA. Now, could the town participate in that? I, that's up to you all, but the whole goal of this study, the town center study is to knit the town center better together. And the public way is a key part of that sidewalk. Um, and the lighting is why I mentioned the lighting earlier. Um, so I I do think that should be discussed further. By the way, I wanted to add that um, I've never met Nick, but uh when he mentioned the cornice, I tried, if you look at the guidelines, the standards, it talks about details like that. And we tried to get it on Converse Place and six fifty four Main Street and the architects just refused and um this team gets it about fitting into a town center and having a unique attractive image. So I wanted to say that. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, the dumpsters at the end of this entryway. And I don't know if there's any screening on that and it looks awfully small in uh for the amount of units.
Um, the rendering of the driveway showed a black gate at that end, Dennis. I did look at that.
Great to hear that. I didn't see.
I don't know if that was just a a a illustrative example or what. If you look at one of the renderings going all the way down the driveway.
Well, um, I guess I asked, well, I don't see it there.
Yeah, so that's what I thought that was, but whatever.
Oh, you may, you may be thinking.
No, not the car, but to the left of the car, looking out into the forest, isn't that a black gate there?
Right there, that, I think that's a, that's a base of a tree potentially.
Oh, okay, so I misread it. But to, well, I agree with Dennis's point about that.
And and just consider it, I I know you have egress there, the the door from the.
It would be enclosed.
So, yeah, think about it. And um, if you go back to the rendering you've been showing, uh, I want to thank you for screening the transformer with the truck. Highly created.
I did notice that.
Thank you. I I think I really don't need to speak anymore unless I see something else, but my comments stand. I like the comment about adding another tree on Waterfield Road opposite the one that we see uh near the entryway. If that can happen, and I hope it can happen, it would make a difference.
And I want to follow up on Nick's comment about the brick sidewalk and and say that I do hope that we can look at that. I think it's a really important thing, this question of knitting the town and the town has brick sidewalks. So that's my bid for support.
Um, so I want to, I want to kind of, um, I'm while I like the look of brick sidewalks, I am concerned about how how accessible they are for people with who, you know, need assistance walking or in wheelchairs. A lot of the brick sidewalk in downtown is, it's, it's just horrific if you have any mobility issues. So I, we need, I don't know if it's possible to create a brick sidewalk which will last forty years and not upheave. But that that is, I've heard a lot about how inaccessible our downtown is because of the state of the sidewalk. So let's, let's, whatever we do, let's be proactive and solve as many problems at the same time as we can.
What you do, you put.
Right, right. I think that's a policy issue that that we we're not going to solve by just making one section different um by by.
No, no, I just don't, I I agree, Nick. I just, if if we're gonna, if we're gonna lead with this project, let's put in the good stuff so that.
Well, well, I mean, Lexington has brick and Cambridge has Harvard Square has brick. It's a very important part of our architectural culture.
I don't disagree, Nick. I completely agree with you, but I work right outside of Harvard Square. And there's some brick which was put down in the last ten years, which is already upheaving. There's brick that's been there thirty years, which is a total disaster. There's some brick which is flat as a pancake and it's been there for twenty years. So I just want to make sure that whatever we do is done correctly. So that we 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 respect the needs of everyone. So I agree. I think brick would look great. Let's just do it right.
The 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 flat is a pancake brick and Cambridge is on a concrete slab. And it's the kind of brick that is perfectly dimensioned, not like old brick, which I think is called city hall pavers. Um, so yes, it can be done. Um.
Even even the S and H pavers can can work well over concrete. Uh, and I think, I mean, some of the brick that was done recently at Church Street looks like uh it was on concrete and they're using the pavers, which are the traditional brick and they look great.
Yeah, I've seen them put it down over asphalt and that hasn't worked well. So I think it's really whatever we spec, let's make sure we spec it right. Um, I do want to, I want to get back to the cornice. And I noticed that in this, in this rendering, you see that the the clad board to the right of the the brick front priest has cornice. If you go way in the background, yep. It's right there. Yep, you see that cornice there, but on the water, on the, on the MBTA side, none of the clabbered has cornice. And it it seems to my eye a little odd. Um, because instead, it it just looks really flat going straight up. And then if you go back to your your rendering where we get to see all of the solar panels, none of that in- interior courtyard has cornice. So presumably you'd have to put up some sort of safety barrier up on the roof. So um, at least I can't see cornice in this one. Maybe I I can't see.
It doesn't have a cornice, but it has a parapet. It's at the same level.
Okay.
And trim too, on the right, you can see it in this view. In the.
Yeah.
On the right.
It just, the the cornice going along the essentially the church, I assume the cornice goes wrapping around all the way down Church Street. Uh, maybe I'm wrong about that, but it just seemed like the usage of cornice versus parapet. Um, to my eye, it seemed a little disjointed. That's the only other, the thing. Um, I just want to note that I share Sally's opinions of gray, not a big fan. Um, the other thing I want to talk of, two more last things. One is um the color of the uh you on the on the rangeli forest or wood side, you do have that long exposed concrete, you're going to be treating it with some sort of an acrylic finish. Um, it would be nice to have a a color which is, you know, more evocat- not evocative of a concrete wall. So I don't know what you would use there, but something that isn't white. Um, and the other thing is that we have heard from the neighbors on Church Street, they're very concerned about the impact of the building overshadowing their properties. Is there some way of putting some sort of a green buffer there?
Uh, between, sorry, uh, between, between the the building, between our our building and the property line?
Yeah, something like some greenery along the property line, which could provide a buffer. Um.
We can definitely look at it. I think the one thing that we would be concerned about is is accessibility with hoses in the fire department. Um, I think that was one of the things when we were talking to them to make sure that they had access. Um, because our property line, from our property line to our building, um, it it's definitely something we can look at. I think my 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 first reaction is I would love to put a buffer there. Um, but based upon our conversations with the town fire department, I think that would be something that we would have to run by them.
Okay, because I know, I know there's been a lot of concern about that and 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 I think that a green buffer, if possible, would really ease some of that concern. Um, I can't speak for them, of course. Um, okay, so those are all my points. Um.
But Dave, can I go back to to one thing I I started to mention earlier that I had made a a short list of the things that said TBD in um the elevations and it was um the brick spec and the finished material for the decorative trim and spandrel. And um, the color of the of the, well, the color you mentioned about the building and the exposed concrete finish, which is what made me just think, because you just reminded me, um, on the back of the building, it says exposed concrete finish to BT, TBD. And um, I think that you mentioned, do you have the, in the conditions memo? And I don't remember if I saw it there or not, there was going to be a wall, uh, what do you call it, a sample wall?
Test wall.
And I guess it's through that process that we come up with um the final color selection. Um, but I would like to make sure that the exposed concrete finish is something that we do have a chance to consider because it sounds like it could be really bad or it could be fine.
They will submit sample boards as part of the process before they build the test wall.
Okay.
A range of choices that they feel satisfies the board and then we go from there.
Okay, that's good to know.
Usually is pretty smooth and it might be two bricks types that are about the same price, might be two colors. But the architect and the development team take the lead. They've heard your comments and mine and I agree, it's critical.
Great.
It's critical. We'll get there.
Okay, but those are things we should certainly, I think there, the design law, I believe, is in the condition, Sally, but certainly if there are sample boards that should be provided prior to that, let's make sure they're in the conditions. Just that everyone is, one of, one of the kinds, I, I don't, I don't doubt the goodwill of the, of the architect and the design team, but people's memories are sometimes not what they think they are. So let's make sure that everybody agrees on that. So I, those are my comments. Are there any further comments on the design? If not, and I'm just saying, according to my little memo to the board in terms of it, we're at the point where we would start our deliberation. So are there any other concerns the board wants to bring up before we start our deliberation?
I thought we were gonna, you were supposed to have peer, public comment before that.
I was gonna say the same thing, Yicheng.
It's in the, it's in our.
In the agenda.
It's in our agenda. Okay, if the board wishes to open it up for public comment. Let's see, anyone who would like to speak, please raise their hand. And we'd like to limit everyone's comments to three minutes. Before you speak, or as you speak, please state your name, your address and your relationship, if any, to this project, and whether or not you're a Winchester resident. And if someone has made a similar comment, please hold off on, on making it again so that we can make sure that everyone gets heard. So Taylor, if you would be good enough to set up the list and, and let people in.
Jeffrey, go ahead. You should be behind yourself.
Great, thank you, Jeff Roloff. I'm an attorney representing KF Realty, owner of the Church Street property to the rear of the building. Can I quickly share a few slides?
Can you tell us, tell us, give us an idea of what this is about?
Yes. So I represent the owners of the building at Church Street. They've submitted some written comments that we feel like haven't been addressed yet, and they primarily relate to public safety issues. So the proposed building, the slides would help if I could give you the images.
Sure, why don't you, why don't you bring up the slide?
Great.
Let me know if you have trouble doing that.
Yeah, I haven't been able.
I might have to give you individual access.
Yeah, thank you. I haven't, I'm trying.
Okay, try again.
All right, there we go.
All right. Let me know if you need anything.
Okay, again. You can see the slide, right? So forty, forty Church Street is right here. The building is a five-unit residential with a business in the back off of Church Street. A very long building with a super narrow driveway off a church. Historically, access has been from the rear. Primary access to this building is still from the rear. I'm going to run through these really quickly. Obviously, here's the Waterfield Lot currently, the, the building, my client's building. Historic access, as I mentioned, this is the, my client's property here. This is a nineteen fifty-nine assessor's map. Access to this property has, primary access has always been from the rear, well before nineteen fifties, back into the eighteen hundreds. This is a picture of the rear of the property currently, my client's building. You can see, so the building is right on the property line. This is currently accessible from the public areas. Deliveries are made back here. The proposed building is proposed to be, I'm going to just go to the zoomed-in version. This is my client's building right here that we were just looking at. The proposed building with the, the bump out section is three feet from the building. Three feet. That, in our view, raises some very significant safety issues. I'm pretty new to this process. My client got involved late because he never got notice of the hearing. I went through the files online. I haven't seen anything in the record before the planning board, either from the applicant or from the fire department, discussing the fire-related, emergency-related access issues associated with this pinch point back here. I mean, obviously, you're not going to get a vehicle back here, even on the side of this building. It's just over eight feet in the back. There's not, no one's claiming that you can get a vehicle back there. But even to get ladders and hoses and personnel back there and trying to address a fire that may be occurring at the back end of my client's building or in the proposed building. And so this is, and I'll, I'm going to apologize to, to Joe Haskett. I stole these images from his slideshow this evening and dropped them into my PowerPoint. But this is, I think, the elevation from the back of my client's property. And the bump out here, as you can see in this area, three feet off the building. Obviously, if there's difficulty getting to that area with emergency equipment and personnel, it's an issue for the occupants on the three stories above in the building that's being proposed, but obviously to my client as well. So we think these are significant issues that need to be addressed and haven't been addressed as part of this review. Public safety is one of the criteria that you're responsible for addressing as part of the special permit and site plan criteria. We have requested a meeting with the, with the development team. They offered to meet us, I think, by Zoom this week, but we've, we've requested an in-person meeting. It's not going to happen on the schedule that you're looking for. I don't, I am very concerned about the schedule that was mentioned by the chairman this evening. There seems to be some understanding that the board has to approve this decision at this meeting, or this project is gonna lose its ability to get financing. I think people need to understand that better. From what I'm seeing in the peer review letters and engineering department memo, and even the discussion this evening, there are a lot of issues that you would normally address during your public hearing process, and that I think you should be addressing during your public hearing process before you close the hearing and get into deliberations. And it seems like there's a, there's a panic to issue this approval, and I think that that's a problem. So this is the letter that I submitted last week. I just wanted to get it on the screen quickly to make sure you had a chance to see it. We're urging the board to keep its hearing open to address these important safety issues. We went through the safety issues that, that I just mentioned before, and we've asked these questions, and I'm wondering if the board members have answers to this. How would, are you expecting emergency personnel to access the future Waterfield residents in the event of a fire or an emergency? Or how would the personnel access the rear upper stories of my client's building? If you don't understand how that's going to happen in an emergency situation, then the hearing should stay, stay open, and those issues should be vetted. I mean, obviously, other issues associated with the building three feet off. These are in the letter that I submitted, hoping that you had a chance to view it.
Thank you very much. Yes, we did get that letter. The entire board got that letter. So I think that the fire department, in particular, the fire chief, has worked very closely with the developers to, to manage all of his concerns about accessing both this property and the properties on Long Church Street. I believe we do have a sign-off from the fire chief on the design of this property and the ability to access what the fire department says they need in order to provide public safety. I do not know that we have a representative from the fire department here this evening to speak to your concerns. But the board relies upon the professionalism and expertise of the fire department to, to go through all of the concerns that you've raised. And the fire department has signed off on these designs. So that's all I can tell you at the moment. And let me, I'm pretty sure we don't have someone from the fire department. In terms of the historical access to your building from the rear, I won't go into that because I don't have all the knowledge. We do have town council here. If town council wants to weigh in on that.
Thank you, Diab, Jay Tellerman, Town Council. As you know, I have a memo in about, I mean, no one has made any claims per se on legal rights of access from the town's property. There is no easement of record or rights of record for access to forty Church Street from the parking lot. There have been some comments, both by the owners of forty Church Street and Mr. Roloff's as to rights of access. Those have not been kind of placed in the context of a legal theory. We did discuss in our memo one potential legal theory that, that could form the basis of those claims. And under the, under the doctrines for those theories under prescription or adverse possession, those, it wouldn't fly to the extent that there is some added facts to that theory, that there was access dating back, historical access dating back before the town acquired the property for the parking lot purposes that are discussed in my memo. The taking by the town more or less would have wiped out any such claims. It's, so we really trace this matter back from the taking, and therefore reached our conclusion, again, in fairness to forty Church Street and Mr. Roloff's. No one has made a claim per se along those lines, but we wanted to be thorough and address the kind of possible scope of claims we might see from similarly situated abutting property owner. So we're pretty confident in that research in terms of what we've done and looked at the title and done all the research on the narrow band of cases that address such claims against municipalities. Those claims are really hard against public entities in general. And under this fact pattern, none of that would lie, in, in our opinion.
Okay, thank you. I should also note that there were significant modifications made to this project at the request of the fire department. And so I believe they have considered many, all of, hopefully all, but I presume all of the public safety issues. So Sam, do you want to speak to some of the changes that the fire department has required of you in order to, to get equipment and, and firefighters to the scene?
Yeah, I can, I can take that. And I think there are some other members of our team who might want to chime in here. But yeah, basically, we met with the fire department. And we, we redesigned the front area along Waterfield Road to make sure that the fire truck could pull into what is, what is now the entrance, but, but would, would be the alley. And then we created a turnaround to the rear of our site for the fire truck so that they have their required two hundred and fifty-foot foot access with the hose. And the fire chief was, he was supportive of that plan. The building is, our building is going to be fully sprinkled. So he was all, you know, he was comfortable with our design.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from your team who wants to, to say something about that? Or, I mean, I think that does the board, does the board wish to have any further information on this?
I just had one question with regards to the three-foot space between the back of the Waterfield Building and the back of the building on Church Street that's built, I guess, right to the lot line. Did the fire department express any concern about that three-foot dimension?
No.
I don't recall any.
Yeah. Our building is fully sprinkled building, and it's designed to meet the building code, which is very prescriptive about how far you can be off property lines with openings and windows, depending upon the type of construction. So we've, Union Studios has used a consultant throughout this process, and obviously what we're proposing is in line with the building code and fire codes. And, you know, we will be submitting a plan set for this to the building department, and obviously all the affidavits and necessary information will be along with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
If I may, Chair, one other thing, I just want to clarify for people. The board, the, what is been driving the process is this is, this is, this is a project that requires a significant amount of money from the state for affordable housing. They have a once-a-year deadline for submitting application for that financing and funding. And that deadline is next week. And part of that requirement for submitting is to have, you know, these votes in line. So just for clarity's sake, for people, you know, it's not required that the board do anything. But I think that this planning process in Winchester probably started eight to ten years ago. I think we went through an RFP public process, probably now four years ago. And have had multiple iterations, multiple town votes, multiple planning processes, all in the public domain and in the open. And so I just want people who may be new to this process to be aware of the opportunities that the general public abutters, everybody has had to speak about the designs that they're talking, they're seeing tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I would also, I would also add on to that.
Just, Sam, I appreciate that you want to continue, but let's, let's, let's move back to our public, our public comment process and Taylor, if you would queue up the next person. Don't mean to cut you off so abruptly, but we are, we are in the public comment process. So we had a Mike Lawler, who's up next? Or, or is that one of your team?
Yeah, Matt, Matt did have it. Okay, so next we have Sarkis Kabakian. You should be able to meet yourself now.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Go ahead, please.
All right, I'd just like to say good evening to the board and as well as the developers. I know we've been communicating via email, so I'd like to make the formal introduction. So thank you guys for your time today. I'd also like to say something right from the get-go.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Kabakian, could you identify yourself, where you live, and what your interest in this is?
Sure, Sarkis Kabakian, forty Church Street, the abutter of the subject property that we're discussing right now.
Thank you.
You got it. So I'd just like to say first and foremost that we're not, we're not formally against this project. We're not coming in here to, to blow smoke and be, be rustling any feathers. So we've been, since the dated of September sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, submitting formal letters. That's our first letter. And then we also referenced the previous town planner's memorandum from January fifth, twenty twenty-three. And additionally, our final letter, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. So we have been making several attempts to open communication and to be involved in discussions. This is something that I hope you guys understand. This building is something that's been in our family's portfolio for going on thirty years now. So I was born and raised in that area. I grew up walking through that Waterfield Lot. I understand that back roads inside and out. Recently been doing a lot of title research, and I understand that you guys have your points as we do as well. But we want to make sure that this is a, this is a larger issue than just understanding on a piece of paper feasibility. In reality, the structure being three feet from our back window is something of great concern that we also have with the fire department, public issue, public safety, excuse me, as Jeff, our attorney Roloff has previously noted. So these are, these are great concerns to us and our building and the longevity moving forward. And to be honest with you guys, everybody on record, it's very, it's very disheartening not even having a conversation, right? You, you guys mentioned several times along the process been going on. We've been here. We have dated letters from twenty twenty-one. We're in twenty twenty-four. So I just wanted to put that out there. I wanted to make sure that we are multiple, multiple times been reaching out. We do want to be involved in any way, shape, or form as we are directed butter, as we are directly affected by this.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any further comments from the public? I'm, I'm afraid I do not have a record of meetings between the various parties to understand what happened over the last four years in terms of what the outreach was. I know that there have been meetings with other Over the last four years in terms of what the outreach was, I know that um there have been meetings with other. Property owners along church street, I don't know all of the details of that. Um, I believe that all of the property owners were properly noticed. Um, so I don't, you know, so the concerns that were that Mister Kabakian and. Mister, I'm sorry, uh. The attorney for Mister Kabakian have expressed were some that have been discussed. But I don't, I don't have any more information about any meetings. Um, if there are no other, would any board members of the planning board wish to comment or ask questions?
Um, we had two letters to us today, right? Is, if you could summarize that.
Uh, Taylor, do you want to do that, please? Are you talking about on this particular?
And.
Yeah, give me, give one sec. This, this one's from the Affordable Housing Trust, um Chair Marty Jones.
Um, and to summarize that, for those who are um perhaps just listening to this broadcast, um. The Affordable Housing Trust is uh endorsing this project. Um, they point out that um the project balances um. The needs of affordability, the desire for public park, parking, um the complexity of building on a small site. Um, meeting sustainability objectives and providing access to the strain station. Uh, they note that the, the trust has committed five hundred thousand dollars of their funds as a loan to the project. Um, where this loan will um eventually return monies to the fund. Um, and it also demonstrates to the state um that the town is uh. Providing resources to support this development and indicating um. Our interest in doing so and the trust urges the board to um. Complete its review and approve the special permit. And our next letter.
Who was the next letter from each?
It was from Susan Verdicchio.
That's what I remember. At six twelve P M.
It may not be in the packet.
At six twelve, yes, so that was after the packet, let me, let me pull it up. It's just gonna be, you're just gonna look at my inbox, sorry.
Okay, now it's so small, I can't see it. Taylor, could you uh, could you summarize that for us, please?
Um, based on a brief review of the revised waterfield project design. Drawings and stormwater management plan, I have to say that the demonstrate. Uh, that they demonstrate the designs, the design team's high level of competence and responsiveness, the concerns expressed by the peer reviewers, planning board and members of the public. I've been following and supporting this project for years and the developer, in the development group has shown great flexibility and patience in making the changes needed by the town. I believe that this will be an attractive addition to the Waterfield Road. While providing much needed transit oriented housing in the town center to help fulfill the town's housing production plan. The board has conducted a very thorough review, I urge you all to approve special permit. Susan Verdicchio, twenty eight, Kenwind Road.
Okay, um. At this point, uh, anything else we should um consider before we move on to deliberations? Okay, um, if not. Let's start. So this project is being submitted as a P U D in the town common area with a waiver for height. Um, as a P U D, it does go through a special permit process, we are also going to be doing. Site plan review and design review. Um, so um. Taylor, could you pop up that, that sort of cheat sheet I? Sent out earlier today, just so we can use that as a visual guide as we move along?
Let me put it, quickly put it into a word document so we can all see it better.
Okay. Uh, this is just a, uh, I went through our zoning bylaws and just wanted to pull out all the important points that we need to just. Decide upon, these are things, the, the simple things like, does it meet the use? Um, what are the dimensional requirements, what are the parking requirements, and then as we move into the P U D? Um, does this meet the um definition, the, the reason, the purpose of the P U D? And um then we move on to um. Uh, what do we move on to, the site plan and design review and then um, there we go, excellent, okay, so. Let's start off by, uh, if you could zoom in, so um I think this, we have for the town common area. There is, it's upper floor residences are allowed by right, special permits would be required for ground floor. Residential, there's no ground floor residential on this. Um, the dimensional requirement for the town common area is a forty, is forty feet. Um, with a P U D, you can ask for a higher and that's the waiver is, I believe, for just a couple of feet over forty. Um.
Sam, can you specify what that, what that height is, please?
I'm sorry, I did not catch what you said.
I asked Sam to specify what that exact height is, so that we can note it.
Um, right. I believe it was, so the, with a special permit in the P U D. Um, you can go up to forty eight feet. And the board is allowed to waive that height requirement where affordable housing is provided, or I think it's called. Um diverse housing opportunities is the way it's worded. Um, so I think our, our height is. Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, like fifty point five?
Oh, I'm way off there.
It says fifty two eight on your drawings to the top of the parapet, top of the parapet.
Yeah.
Fifty two feet, eight inches.
Okay, then that, that's, that must be it.
Yep. Sorry, I got, I was off by a factor of ten because I was looking at the wrong chart. So the uh, right, so the town common height is forty feet without special permits. Um, so we're gonna go, we're gonna be requesting um up to fifty two eight.
I, I believe the way that ru- um roof height is calculated was not to the top of the parapet.
I think that's right.
That's correct.
That's correct, it's just the roof.
So it's a little bit, maybe that's why I was saying fifty point five.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, so um, we're not asking for a floor ratio change. Um, we're not asking for a front setback waiver, the minimum side setback is actually zero. Um, minimum rear setback, uh, I don't believe, what is your rear setback?
Says twenty feet or fifteen with special permit.
No, but what's, what's the actual setback on this property?
Eight feet.
Eight, eight point three feet, I believe, or sorry, seven point eight. I, I provided a table in, in our um submission packet.
Yeah, um.
The plan shows eight feet, three inches.
Okay, so we're looking for eight feet, three inches.
I think that's what that says.
Okay.
It does, Sally, but it's seven point eight at this nearest point near the, the trash.
Oh, yes, thank you, Yiching, yes.
And then um, I don't know if you've calculated the open space. Um, the open spaces, um. What with, I think that we have special consideration here because we're required to put in all the parking, so that's uh.
Sam, did you say you had a table that summarized the requirements and the proposed? And you said it was in your original?
Yeah, it, it was in our narrative submission that we originally submitted.
Has the design changed so much since that narrative submission, it's this, right?
I don't think it's changed significantly, but.
June sixth, twenty three is what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, uh, it, it, it will have changed a little bit because we, we took um. We took the bump out, out of the building. Um, the footprint changed slightly, but it's not, it's not going to be significantly different and. I don't think the board needs to make specific waivers for all of these dimensional requirements because it is in the P U D. So just as a point of order there.
I think D M may have just dropped. Yeah, are you, yeah, so hopefully he'll be back with us momentarily.
Would council be able to tell us whether or not we may need to make um special waivers for each of these?
Yes, thank you, Yiching. Jay?
Um, I'd have to, I haven't been presented with the waiver um. List or anything yet, um, so I could look at it, I, I'm less concerned about the process. By which you make the waivers than the fact that if there are waivers to be made. Uh pursuant to the bylaw that there's some, that there's some um paper trail with that, but I would need to. I would need to see the list and compare the, the table up um to that.
So Jay, in the uh July sixth, twenty twenty three um narrative. On page five, there's one waiver requested, which is a waiver for height above, excuse me, above forty eight feet. Where diverse housing opportunities are provided. And I think that's the only waiver that's in writing. Um, or at least referred to as a waiver.
Well, and again, I, I just heard a reference to the, the P U D. Because obviously I see a reference down to. To the C B D and with respect to the rear setback, so that that waiver is gonna. I, I'm assuming is coming from a different source. Because that says fifteen feet.
So the way we submitted our, the, our understanding of the bylaw was that. The board is allowed to approve essentially what it deems is appropriate in the P U D district. And that deviations from the, the normal base zoning are not. To be considered s- specific or separate waivers. That, you know, it's basically one big package that the board approves. Uh, so we're not asking for. Separate special permits or variances from these. Uh, from these dimensional requirements because the P U D. Grants the board, you know, broad discretion.
Right.
But we did request the waiver for height because it, that's the only one that's specifically mentioned. In the dimensional requirements for the P U D zone.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that is the waiver for height above forty eight feet. Where diverse housing opportunities are, are provided.
Right. We have D M back.
Yeah, I, am I, can you hear me?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that, for some reason my wifi just decided to die. Um, and so I'm, I'm, I'm moving. I, I think I missed some of your discussion about the P U D. Um, and the flexibility that were given in the P U D in order to accommodate um different dimensional criteria. And uh I, I agree with what was said and I was hoping. To get to that spot, um. So I think.
The zoning, you're looking in the zoning?
Well, yeah, but I, I was doing that while waiting for my wifi to come back on, so I think we can continue as long, soon as I can find the zoom window again. Um, which I can't. Oh, there it is. Okay, so um. Why don't towns? I really don't like the towns online. Um. So let's, let's um, let's move on to um. The next section, the dimensional requirements are some, I'm, I'm gonna find the, the line in the P U D which talks about that here. Okay, the, the, and as, as I point out later on, the P U D is intended to ensure coordination and flexibility in design and review. Rather than through the application of fixed regulations. Um, it's, and that's essentially the point. Where the P U D comes in and it allows us to um. There are dimensional requirements for the P U D, um, but they are essentially lot. Area, minimum frontage, height and F A R. So if we scroll to the next page, um, I think it talks a little about that, okay. Uh, the only, the only key thing I want to point out is that there is a parking requirement, the parking is within the footprint of the building, which it is. Note that the, the private parking for this structure is actually well within the footprint of the building. Um, and so we see here the, the language from the P U D which points out that, that it's. Um, there is flexibility given to us, um. And here are the things that we need to, to talk about is, does this project meet the purpose of the P U D? Which is to provide a diversity of housing types, price points and sizes. And so that's the first, I think, discussion on the board is, do we feel that this project meets the purpose of the P U D?
I do, yes.
Is there any?
I, I do as well.
And Carrie, you're the last person?
I do.
Okay, I do as well, so I think that um, the consensus of the board is that it does meet the purpose. Um, we note that the uses by right or special permit within the underlying C B D area are allowed in the P U D and that's what's happening here. Um, we scroll down to the dimensional requirements and we see that um we have the, the. Um, ability to authorize additional height if the construction meets the goals and objectives by authorizing more diverse opportunities. Um, and so the question to the board is um, is the board um willing to waive? To approve the height of fifty two point eight as, as a exception and because of the conditions in this paragraph.
Yeah, it's one of the few projects in town that absolutely um provide diversity of housing needs, so yes.
Okay, so let's go through that, just so we get, so that's, Yiching says yes.
And Sally says yes.
Nick says yes.
And Carrie?
As yes.
And I say yes as well, so I think there's a, there's a unanimous consensus on this part. Um, we're not looking for a waiver on the F A R, I, I believe.
I think it's over by, it's over by um, uh, point oh eight.
I, okay, if it's over by point oh eight, um, then we do, are going to have to require that. Um. And.
Well, no, actually, it's two point five by special permit and it's only at one point five eight.
Okay, so then we're good to go, so, but we would have to allow that. Um, so it is a requested of one point five eight, so.
If that chart from July sixth is still accurate, um.
Is, oh, oh, that's a good point, with the um re um, design of the building, has your F A R changed?
Um, I, I would assume it's changed slightly, I don't, um, I don't think we have a precise calculation at this time.
But it's probably um very similar to the one point five eight, you're not, you haven't moved it up to two or three.
Right, if anything, it's probably less because we've lost residential units.
That's what I saw.
Guns, Mark.
Yeah.
Um, so.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, so um. Any uh comments from the board on approving this waiver? Or approving the 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 um larger F A R?
I'm I'm in support.
Okay, Sally?
I'm in favor.
Nick?
Also.
Yes.
Oh, Carrie, okay? E Ching?
Yay, yes.
Yay, and I mean, okay, so I think we're okay with the F A R. Um, now we can go down to the site plan and design review. Um, so this is um. Site plan and design review are applicable to the site because uh it's definitely. A large enough lot, so we'll scroll down to um the next set, and these are the general standards for site plan review. And we want to determine that these um various criteria have been considered and that adequate provisions have been made. So are there eleven or twelve? Or is it my screen? Okay, my screen, my screen seems not to be showing them all. Which is kind of strange, okay? I don't know, go to full screen. So um, we we can take these one by one, or what I would hope is if there is one where you think there is a concern, if you would raise that.
I think we've spent a lot of time on all of these and we've had all our questions answered.
I would agree.
Nick or Sally?
As I do.
Yeah, I I agree as well.
Okay, so why don't we we take a vote on um site plan review, do we um? I guess. We endorse site plan review, we don't. Um, we endorse endorse the the site plan.
Yes.
So um, why don't we have a go around on that, Sally?
I endorse the site plan.
Okay, Nick?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
E Ching?
Hi.
And I do as well. Uh, now we move on to design review guidelines, these are a little. Less specific. Um, so I think as we know, these are taken from the the zoning bylaw, the goal is create a functionally diverse and active downtown development. Uh, new structures must be compatible with historic architecture and sense of place. Um, and so this is just sort of the the preamble, and if we scroll down to um. The actual um. Things that we should consider are um open space and circulation, so we have. Um, open space, um, shell consists of parks and previous landscapes that are open to the sky at the ground level. Um, this is highlighted in red, I think, because we all know how challenged this project is in terms of providing. Parks or previous landscapes. And so the question to the board is. Given the constraints on this project, namely to both provide affordable housing. And to provide a substantial number of parking spaces. Or I should say substantially similar number of parking spaces to what we have now, does the benefit to the. Outweigh the detriments of the law, lack of open space?
Well, I would say that it was encouraging to hear from Sam that the front courtyard experience. Um, is still something that they're looking at. In terms of how it communicates the emphasis on pedestrian versus vehicular. Um, but the fact that the the building faces the town common. And that the front courtyard opens out to the town common, so you almost have that concept of the borrowed landscape. Which, I mean, where I live, I benefit from it, my neighbor has a beautiful garden I look at every day. Um, so. I think that, given the constraints. And given the the recent changes with the um amount of shrubbery and greens that are on the um ground plane, um. I would say that they've done the best they can. That's what I say.
Okay. Um, any other comments from the rest of the board?
Yeah, I think they did a good job with um the heavy lift of before housing and and parking, yes, they they did a great job.
And and so to the to the to the question, um, do the benefits of this project outweigh? The negative impact of not having the open space, so that that's the question we need to ask ourselves, and E Ching, you have said yes.
Yes, and Sally says yes.
I say yes.
And Carrie?
I agree, I do hope the. I hope at least one tree works out, but I the benefit outweighs the. Possibility that it will not.
You mean survive?
Well, the, you know, I think there's still a discussion about, you know, whether the select portal bend on the parking space and allow a tree, but. It's not, it's not a deal breaker, I think the project way outweighs the the um, yeah.
Okay. And I agree with that as well. Um, now that I think was the one which was the most um. Concerning in terms of these, um, so number two and number three. Any strong feelings about those, have they met the requirements for those?
Uh, I think they have, and particularly with the service facilities, I I commend the team on. They're um working very hard to meet the needs of. The adjacent business on Waterfield with regards to the existing. Um, access to the back of their building and alleyway being preserved.
Okay, um, so I think if if the. If the board would just wants to signal their acceptance of. Um, two and three, we can just do a quick vote on that um. So uh Sally?
I.
Nick?
I.
Carrie?
Hi.
E Ching?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Um, so we get down to mix of land uses and um. I think that um. That's pretty much. Housing is the one that's there, um, so there's housing, there's parking. Um, the parking is screened in the sense that it is within the building, the parking that's outside is actually. I think we should, we can consider that public parking, uh, whether that. Should have the same requirement for screening? There's a question the board, if the board wants to discuss that?
Oh, I think that if the, if all of the outdoor spaces are part of the inventory of publicly available parking. Um. Um, and given that there's a transformer there anyway. Um, it's pretty screened and it might not need to be screened if it's a publicly accessible parking lot. Is that? True?
Uh, you know, that's a, that's, that's, I'm, 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 you know. We have a strange thing where we have the the parking for the residents is. Definitely screened because you can't see it, but the the mandated public parking is. Half of it's screened in the building and half of it isn't. And whether we should apply the same. Requirement for screening to the public parking. Is.
We don't have screening for the average owner lot and we don't have screening for the public safety lot. Um. And. This parking array stretches in a single line. Straight into the property, so you'd never see more than one car. Preferably a large blue pickup parked in front of the the. Transformer, I don't know, I it is, it's, it's. It feels very late in the process to be talking about screening, I I don't think that it's an issue.
Yes.
Okay. Um, any comments from the rest of the board?
No.
Shall we just go around and 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 and? I think these, if if the board is okay with the parking and the screening, um, why don't we take a, I'll take a vote, um. So this is seven, three, seventeen, three, let's just do the whole. Thing, seven, three, yeah, that is seven, three, seventeen, three, so um Sally?
Yes, they've they've met the um criteria.
Nick?
Uh, I.
Uh, Carrie?
Hi.
E Ching?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Okay, um, now we get down to the design review. Part of it. Um. And uh, so we have heard from the design review committee. Which looked at, I believe, a version of this prior to the. Modifications made uh to satisfy the fire department's requirements. Um, I believe that their primary concern or their primary, they they thought it was a great, a great, a good design, I don't want to put words in their mouth. But they would have preferred brick um rather than clapboard. Um, so that was their um. Their view, we have heard from. Um, our design consultants, and I think that. The only things that I could pull out here in terms of the elements of form is that we do have, um, we talk about street walls. And um continuation of street walls. And the original design did have one, but it has subsequently, uh, we've lost the street wall and we've moved um. The front of the building back even further. So the street wall. Is not held up, we don't maintain it. Um, and so there's a question before the board again, is the um. The benefit of the design and this project. Um, sufficient to overcome the negative impact of not maintaining the street wall?
I would say yes, especially since it was the M B T A and our own fire department that asked them to change the setback of the building. They took out the the um portico, is that what it call, it was called? And um. You know, the the entry gate, I don't know what it was called, um, and they set the building back, and so. It was necessary, everybody was present through every one of those changes, so. I think that we would say that they did the best they could.
And even before that, the retail was taken out of the front. Um, so pushing it back seems, you know, more residential friendly, so for for all those reasons, including the one Sally said, yes. It's the the benefit outweighs. The debt, the.
Right.
Detriment.
Okay, so um Nick or Carrie, any comments?
No, I agree, it's a safety issue and it's been a set of accommodations that's gotten us there, and I think the benefits outweigh the.
I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, so thanks, so why don't we take a a quick vote on this, uh Sally?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Nick? Yep, uh Carrie?
Hi.
E Ching?
Hi.
And I say I as. Well, um, so um, number five, um, we do also have uh the element of form of. Uh, having buildings step back um. So that we we break up the scale at the street front. Again, uh, I think that the previous versions of this structure did have some form of that. That has all sort of gone away with some of the additional requirements placed on the building, so again. Um, do the benefits of this project outweigh the negative impacts of not having the step back?
Well, I would, I would say that that they did a really good job of minimizing the massing of the building as it immediately effaces Waterfield. Uh, road. Um, and that was part of the purpose of doing step backs. It reads as essentially a three-story building from the street, which is not an unheard of, if 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 I'm remembering it right, um. I I I think that, again, that they've done a a good job of massing, which is what this whole. Question of set step backs is about. Um, so I see it's fine, that's what E Ching said.
Oh, well, and they had to increase it to four floors in order to preserve some of the units. Um, that were uh not possible when they had to set it back, so.
The front facade is four now, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Visualized that, sorry. It's again, it's, 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 it's an incredibly um. A context sensitive building for how much it's providing to the town.
Okay, so um if there are any other comments or none, I can, I can just, we can uh. Vote on this one, um, so this would be seven, three, seventeen. Four dot five, good lord. Um, Sally?
Yes.
Uh, Nick?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
E Ching?
Hi.
And I say I as well. So those are the ones in red, which I knew there 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 are things. So then the 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 question goes to the rest of the elements of form, the height, nope, go, you're got a little too, or numbers one, two and three, height, scale and massing. These, I think, are um, we can. I didn't see anything in our bylaws which flagged them as being uh. Possibly um in violation, so we can have a discussion about these um. Or we could go straight to another um poll to see whether we believe that they have met these elements of form.
Well, we talked about the height and the scale of the building mostly happens deep into the lot. And the massing is similarly um. Pushed to the back, so I think that with regards to elements of form, they've done a really good job of. Preserving the scale of the village. While, again, meeting an incredibly huge program need.
Okay, and and how does the rest of the board feel?
Um, same, they they also broke it up with materials and and setbacks and um broke down a really large forms to. To house fifty-seven units and lots of parking, so bravo.
Okay, so um I get the feeling that we can go straight to another poll here on seven, three, seventeen, four, one, two and three, um. Let's see, uh Sally?
Yes.
Nick?
I.
Carrie?
Hi.
E Ching?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Um, the next part of the design review talks about some of the details of the. Building materials and some of the, I don't know what you call them, accessories, awnings, balconies, windows.
We talked about all of these, we talked about balconies, but we talked about all of these.
Yeah, in the interest of time, do we, do we want to go, I should note that number seven, these windows do open. So um, I just wanted to make sure that they are, say they are operable. Does the board wish to discuss this, or do we want to um move to a vote on this one?
The way we left it is that there would be a, um, again, I forgot the name of the thing that you call it, you go through a process with sample boards and Dennis described it and. We we are very clear um about the planning board's opportunities to weigh in. And have a say on. Materials, color. Awnings and rooftop equipment and the windows sound like a great solution, so. And transparency of ground floor spaces would only apply if there was ground floor retail and there's not, so it seems to me that. We've discussed it and we have an action plan going forward.
Okay, so does does the board feel comfortable saying that this part of the design requirements have been met, or there is a plan to ensure that they are met?
Yes. Pending.
It's pending. So I still, we still need to sign off on this section as part of our design review guidelines.
You can say pending.
I think we can.
I I I just, yes, like, we could say pending, but is the board ready to?
What were you gonna say?
I just say that I I I think that we can. You know, as long as all those um. Procedures that Dennis mentioned are in place, I think we can. Uh, sign off on this.
Okay, so we'll make sure that the conditions. That they are in the conditions, so um.
With specific reference to materials and colors and and about the, and the penthouse mechanical equipment.
Okay, so materials, colors, mechanicals. And uh. I think that's a materials.
And we also wanted, and Dennis covered a lot of it, it's already in there about wanting to have a say in the final design for the the rooftop deck and. You know, it was, and we discussed it.
Okay, so if those are in the conditions, then we can sign off on seven, three, seventeen, five. So can I get a, can I, let me do a straw poll or not a straw poll, a poll here, Sally?
Yes.
Nick?
I.
Carrie?
Hi.
E Ching?
Hi.
I'll say I as well. Okay, it definitely meets the inclusionary housing requirements, I think. That's an easy one, so we can scroll past seven, three, nineteen, we don't even have to discuss that. Parking and loading requirements, it does meet the requirements because it has. I think it 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 meets them, I forget what they are already, they're point seven five per unit.
Right.
And I believe it it goes over those.
I I did have one question about a a note on the drawings that pointed to the. The the not a parking space pullover right in front of the building next to the bump out. And it says that it's an MBTA drop-off spot, and I. Thought that the drawings probably shouldn't say that, to me, that's a drop-off spot for the residents of the building. I'm trying to find the note, it says MBTA and ride share loading zone. And I mean, maybe that was just kind of like, because it's close to the T, they said that, but if I was someone that lived there. I would want to know that that space was available for me.
So that is controlled by the select board?
Yeah, I think that's right.
So. We could, we could, we could certainly request the full, I don't know what, whether we would put in the the. I guess the developer could put in a request to keep that space non-parking.
Yeah, we'd say no parking, standing only, or whatever the choices are.
I presume that would be part of their agreement with the town in terms of parking, but we could make sure that's in the conditions. So that's another thing that ensures in the conditions that the.
Noted that this, that that's not a parking space right in the front, right at the front door.
Space on waterfield in front of building should be.
Live parking for resident use only, something like that?
Be, well, it would be live or MBTA, should should be. Should not be. Parking.
It should be a live drop-off loading and zoning, they say.
There we go, drop, drop off loading zone, drop off. Slash loading, okay, and that's a request to the SB, okay. Um, so something happened to the formatting, but now we can jump into the special permit criteria. Which are separate from, so we've gone through site plan review, we've gone through design review, we're now going into the special permit criteria. Which are in section nine, four, two, the zoning bylaws, which are alluded to sort of obliquely in section seven point three. So these are the. I think there's more than seven, but let's go through them, I think what we can. Again, Taylor, could you scroll up so see if we can get most of these on the page?
Yeah, there's seven of them, dear.
There's only seven? Okay, well, then I'm wrong, I thought there were more. So is there anything in in the in the interest of saving time? Is there something amongst these seven that the board wishes to discuss?
So the only one would be number four, item C, with the adequacy of proposed screening and buffering. I think.
Okay.
Um, and we had conversations about that, we talked about buff, the exploring the buffering of the. The very back wall that faces the buildings on church. And we talked about the possibility of buffering the transformer box. Either with plantings or maybe with art. Um, I don't know if that constitutes a buffer, but. There's not a.
That would be a screening, screening, I think that would be.
And you know, it's an opportunity for the cultural district or cultural council to to. Collaborate with the the owner of the building. To come up with something fun or relevant or. Attractive if they chose, but I don't think they can do much more than they've done.
Okay. We can probably put some, we're gonna probably have some conditions on that, we could say. Have them look at that. Um, any other concerns or comments? On any of these? If not, then I would.
One question about number six, to what extent have we been able to? And I can't imagine that the planning board would know how to do this, to articulate the fiscal impacts. In in including impact on town services, tax base.
This is a big process that that went through the referendum and. Where where people looked at the impacts.
Right, that's true.
I think we could depend on that, and people, proponents of that referendum are saying that. This in fact is is good for the town now and.
Right, because of the renegotiation of the. Yes, I forget what it's called, lease.
LDA.
LDA, thank you, land development agreement, so good, okay, we did.
But also to, for tax bases too, it it it's going from zero dollars to hundreds of thousands of dollars per year, which is wonderful.
Yes.
New tax revenue.
Yes.
Are there any other concerns or questions on these? If not, then. Why don't we vote on on these in bulk, suppose it were? So we're looking at, oh, could you scroll back up, Taylor, please, so I can see what section this is? Section nine, four, two, so special permit criteria. So why don't we have our vote here, who goes first, Sally?
Yes, they have met special permit criteria as listed here, one through seven.
Um, Nick?
Hi.
Okay, thank you, Carrie?
Bye.
E Ching?
Happily say hi.
And I say I as well. So we have moved through design, site plan, special permits, we have approved the. Height waiver for the PUD. Um, I think that we don't have, there has been no degree, disagreement with the recommendations of any other town agencies. So I think we're good on that. And we, I think we're at the bottom here, Taylor, if I'm not correct, that's it. So at this point, we want to scroll all the way to the top of this document. And so. We go to conditions, so as far as I can tell, as if you remember my bookkeeping. With this site has been approved, except for conditions, I think we've covered everything. So now we move on to the conditions and Taylor.
Some of the things that we talked about tonight came up as new additions, conditions, is that right?
Well, why don't we, why don't we take a look at the conditions, I think some of them may have been added. In preparation. First, I I'm pretty sure that, for instance. I know I asked for the parking lot. If we could get, have conversations with the select board to open up a couple of spaces. So why don't we go to the list of conditions? And a lot of these are from engineering. Um, so we can go through these. Taylor, you are more familiar with these than I, so if you wanna take us through these, whatever pace you think is appropriate. And Matt, if you, you're still here, looking a little blurry, that's how I feel. But.
What is, what is needed from me, do do we need to read each one?
Um, I think if there's anything that we should, I mean, so to be honest, I think.
Well, I had asked the question if the, if the, if the sample boards and the test wall are in here, because I.
So let's, let's scroll through there, I think there was a twenty eight, Taylor?
So there's, there are two, two additions since the draft that you have was included, so the. The numbers are a little bit different, but what you're talking about is number twenty-three in this, in this draft. Which might be number twenty-eight in your, in your draft. But it's. Specifically, the color of all exterior materials included but not limited to paint epoxy and other coatings shall be approved by the planning board prior to the issuance of planning of a building permit. And that. Would be the. Ah, the, 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 the board in in question.
Right. And then here, number B, it talks about the plantings, paving, furnishing, lighting, and screening. And it says too, such determination of consistencies should be made by the town planner. And if inconsistencies are determined to be substantial by the town planner. Then administrative approval is required from the planning board in consultation with Dennis Garlone, so. That sounds fine, I I know this doesn't describe the sample wall, though, I don't think it's in here.
So it's, it's certainly, you have had a discussion amongst yourself, but. But A, certain, to to me, the, it gives us the opportunity to have a development team present us. The, their, their findings in a, in in a way, but it's, but it's totally up to you to decide if it needs to be clarified even further.
My written, my written comments included it. Uh, I would attach that to this, that's what we're specifically talking about. And the guideline, the town's center standards calls it out as well.
So again, a question to Sam and team, is that something that you you see as a feasible? Um, step in your process? I mean, I'd see them all over the city, I think of them as not.
Yeah, I mean, I think I have a mock-up. Anyway, so it's not a problem, however you wanna say it.
I think that the town residents will be extremely excited and grateful to see what the final finishes of the building would be.
So, so why don't we just amend a? And just say that, you know, we want to, we want to have a test wall. And maybe incorporating. Dennis's comments is sufficient, but why don't we just put it in there just so that everyone knows it's in there? Is that okay with the board?
I like the idea of of incorporating Dennis's comments and also considering a softer color and and all of the other issues that were brought up.
Yeah.
Right, but in in specific, specifically, do we want to include the requirement for? Test wall?
Yes.
I think so, I I think that's.
And the sample boards that that, alone, the process that Dennis described of.
So let's just put in, I don't know if it's attached to A. Um, but let's just say, we require sample boards and. A test wall, and I think the sample words come first and the test wall comes at some point. Um, prior to issuance of the building permit. Okay.
Thank you, Dennis.
So that was, and so then, one of the things that. The other thing that I had asked for was the, a. A condition that we direct the applicant to engage with the select board to reduce, there we go.
Yep.
So that's cool.
Did you wanna also add that portion about the drop-off live parking in front? That's just a bookmark for this one, or rather than the development team.
Yeah, is there, I mean, I know there's a section in here which talks about. Traffic, right?
Matt, Matt, if you wanna chime in, doesn't that fall under you not select word?
Which, which, which aspect?
The, the loading zone, the loading zone out, out, out front. Next to the.
Well, I know we had a, we had a, we had a comment, you know, we, I think from town staff's point of view, strongly don't. Want any parking there or any kind of live loading, but you know, it it's something that could potentially. Be brought to the select board as as the, you know, street commissioners. But I think the fact that it's next to the bump out, next to the crosswalk and the hydrant was. Why we're recommending not having any kind of parking or loading there.
Oh, as is currently shown on the drawing, you mean?
Yes.
Okay, so, so what does, so we have.
So for a programmatic point of view, people who would be dropping off a friend from just. I brought you home, here you go, and you get on the sidewalk and you go inside, isn't that where they're gonna do that?
I mean, we 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 need to have a place for dropping off, for food delivery, for. All that stuff.
Well, so it might be that.
I mean, I would say that.
I mean, it's gonna happen anyway, and I I think it's better to have some kind of a. A designated spot. I mean, it's it's gonna be double parking, there's gonna be delivery of dinner or whatever.
No, I do think, I do think it's gonna happen, but I think there's a difference between it casually happening and us encouraging it by. Getting it a spec- space for it to happen, so you know, I I would consider, consider that. We are talking about a location that's next to a fire hydrant and right next to a crosswalk.
So.
You know, so there are some safety concerns.
That's a really big deal, actually.
So, so Matt, what do you envision being there, just, I mean, it it sounds like, I'm I'm not, this isn't a criticism, I'm trying to understand. It's just a space which really isn't being used for anything, so why not just turn it into, why not extend the bump out further? And just take up that space?
And that's certainly a possibility as well.
Is, is there a ramification for access to the driveway for the fire?
I think we would want the the civil team to run the turning templates and make sure it doesn't have any impact on access to the alleyway. I don't think it would, but we would want them to confirm that. And we would just want them to look at the drainage, making sure the drainage works there. But that would certainly discourage anyone from using that as a location for. Parking or live loading or anything like that.
Unless they did it in the middle of the street. And I think that's the big thing I'm worried about is, like, so if if there's, if it's a, it's a full bump out across that whole. Front of the building there, when somebody does have a delivery, whatever it is, I mean, it could be, it's gonna happen in. In the driveway, and the width of the driveway doesn't necessarily accommodate. People pulling into the driveway and pulling around a standing vehicle. Is that true? I mean, I have to look at the site plan again.
Yeah, I I mean, the aisle, I think, is twenty or twenty-one feet wide, so certainly if there was a car pulled over to the side, you know, a car could pull around it. You know, if a car was trying to back out of. Now, you know, if car, car was parked in one of those stalls up against the MBTA station and there was a car parked across from it, it would probably be difficult to pull out. But you could certainly.
And then if there's an Amazon Prime truck. Like Amazon Prime would know to pull into the driveway, not pull over in the middle of Waterfield Road.
Yeah.
So how does the board feel about handling this spot?
Well, it shouldn't stop the development or. So.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Is it something that we need to just set aside apart from these conditions and have something for the select board to? Figure out?
So, so we should, do we, Taylor, do we have a a condition which talks about a. A traffic management plan and a parking plan to discuss with the select board?
Uh, yes, we do.
Which, yeah, I I thought I saw it in there.
I know I did too. Here, fifteen. It doesn't say select word in there.
I still, I still want a question with with Matt, if if we're gonna, if if the bump out is gonna be, and. I I don't, I see this as an engineering thing, not a select board thing, this is, this is public realm, this is the street. The 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 roadway, I don't understand why the select board would be involved.
Because they're the commissioners of the streets.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm looking at it as currently, it's, it's not marked for parking. Um, so. Well, I wasn't anticipating increases, you know, adding it as a loading or parking area. Well, I wasn't anticipating increases, you know, adding it as a loading or parking area. Certainly, it's something we could have the peer reviewer, the traffic peer reviewer. Chime in on for their professional opinion. Um. Any change in a parking regulation would have to go to the select board with staff providing input. Or, you know, we probably want the select board to, to look at that. Um. I don't think that it's pulled up the, the project. I think that can be incorporated.
I, I, I agree, but I, I, I don't, I don't think that fifteen is the one I was thinking of. I think that the, there is one which talks about the, um. Discussion about management of traffic flow after the building is constructed. There's something, I've. Thought there was a, a condition that. They need to discuss, um. All of that with the select board and so.
Well, there's number twenty-four. That's about long-term pricing, I mean, parking plan, but.
That, well, let's, shall we go to number twenty-four? Twenty-four is exterior lighting.
Oh, the numbers changed. That's right.
Yeah, so I think if we want to.
The applicant shall submit its long-term parking. There it is, twenty-five.
So if we want to say anything about this, this spot up front, why don't we include it in number twenty-five, just so that it's covered? And we can move on.
I think twenty-five is, is geared more towards, um, implementing elements of the LDA. Um, so i- if you want to stand alone that they should coordinate with the select board. And the engineering regarding. Um, because the select board owns the streets and is going to control everything on the streets. But if they should coordinate any, um. Uh, use of a adjacent public way for parking, loading or unloading. With the select board. I mean, it's more of a feel-good thing than just directing them to. Speak with the select board. You can impose a requirement as a planning board on a restriction. Or a designation of a parking space on a public way. So.
He said, we can.
Cannot.
We cannot. No, that's why I was saying the only condition would be that we would like to know that they've worked it out to the select board satisfaction.
Right, so it would just be, you know, the applicant shall. Shall coordinate with the select board, um, uh, any use of the adjacent public way for. Uh, parking, loading. Deliveries and the like, or however.
Well, it's anything that would be proposed to be occurring on a public street, and it leads me to wanting to know that there's. Some way of clearly indicating to drivers entering. That, that driveway. That if they're gonna pull over and stop, they shouldn't do it too close to the road, first of all, because somebody could tail end them pulling in. Um, it just. A little bit more focus on.
So, so, so based on what Jay is saying, we can, we can defer to the select board and this enables us to. I guess punt on this and, and satisfy whatever it is we need to, to get the project moving and sign off on it.
Well, by punch, it's usually that we make a condition. We say, yeah, we.
So, so I think, I think, yeah, so I, I think that. Just to, to, to steal. Jay's words almost exactly is, um, the applicant. Will add this and we can all vote on it. The applicant shall coordinate with the select board, any use of adjacent public ways for parking or loading. And so let's put that in as somewhere, that's one of the conditions.
And the ancillary condition in, in, shall work with their team and whatever consultants they need. To make sure the directional signage in the roadway, the, the private road, the, the driveway. Um, it makes it very clear to drivers where they should pull over if they need to.
Okay, um, so that.
Doable, Sam?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so applicant. Shall provide.
Signage plan as part of the final construction plans, I would imagine.
Signage plan as part. Of the final. Construction. Plan. To. Um. To, what the heck? The signage plan is supposed to do what? To mitigate?
Direct, the direct traffic, um.
To direct loading.
Yeah.
To direct loading.
For safe loading and drop off.
And drop off.
Yeah.
I would add something in that too, just so. It covers everything. There's gonna be directions, no parking here and there, so.
That's true. Like, you don't, you don't want people pulling over in front of where we just took two parking spaces out.
Yeah, I mean, it's parking, drop off, deliveries, loading.
Okay, to direct. Parking. Drop off. Deliveries. And loading. Okay, so this is what it would read, would be the applicant shall provide signage plan as part of the final construction plan. Direct parking, drop off, deliveries and loading. Okay, so that would be a second condition to add. Okay, um, I would also, um, any other con-. Conditions that the board members would like to add that we haven't discussed. I know there's one for a buffer along Church Street properties, if possible, but. We can get to that at the end. If there's anything else the board wants to put in. I know, um, we had a comment earlier, um, internally that we were a little light on design conditions. And so do we want to review, um, twenty-three? To be sure that it encompasses, I think it's twenty-three.
Yeah, it might be twenty-three now, but I wanted to make particular sure that we had a chance, because it says color of exterior materials. Pavings, plantings, paving, furnishing, lighting, screening. And I would also say the planting and design of the second story, um, courtyard. I think because that's going to be so visible to the public. That we, I mean, they can't walk up there, but it's certainly.
They can see it from the train platform.
That's right. Good point. So yes, that, that has to be part of our, and I thought that was all covered and that Dennis did, um. Um, well, so under twenty, whatever the number is B, um. You would add. The thing about the second, the, 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 I'm sorry, the interior courtyard. I don't know what it's called. I'm sorry. Getting really tired.
It's muted.
See what?
I, I would say as outlined in the design review memo and developer response. Or something to that effect and attach that.
Okay, so let us, um. And can we just simply put that at the end of? The opening sentence of twenty-three, which would cover just about everything?
Yes.
So we would amend the opening sentence to the applicant shall continue to work with the planning board selected design consult to further. Refine the following aspects of the project. And now Dennis, your words again. As outlined.
In.
In the attached.
Design review. Comments. And developer response or development team response. Uh, uh, we're. Pretty much there, but we want to make sure there's. Definitive points where we have a check-in and if anything dramatically changes, which none of us expect. Then they would come to the board to show it to you, but otherwise. It could be staff and myself. Just making sure it's continuing the way it looks now and. Ideally getting a little more refined. At least that's how I done it in the past.
No, I, I, I agree. I think that the other, the other role we're playing here is to assure the public that we are actually. Um, making sure that the project ends up. Being what it's proposed to be, so.
No, fundamentally. Fundamentally the same as their drawings will be attached.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, that's pretty much what it says there. Um, the other, the other, um. Point that came up today was, do we need to reference a specific date on a drawing? For instance, do we have anything in here which indicates that we are looking at the? Designs as presented to the board on the. Whatever today's date is, the sixth of, the sixth of February. Do we have that in there somewhere?
First paragraph.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So that's that. Um, so the only other thing I would like to add would be. A, um, a, a statement in there, a condition that the applicant. Work with the, um, fire department. Um, to determine what sort of green buffering is possible along the church street. Um, property line. I believe that was a concern. Um, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, that you were concerned about. Um, whether putting green buffering there would actually be a hindrance to public safety.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah, so let's just put in, I'd, I'd like to just put in something that, so applicant shall consult with. With, um, fire and, oh, let's just throw in engineering. To see if. Buffering. Along the. Church Street property line. Is possible. Okay. Um, any further conditions?
I just want to thank whoever took the time to articulate the dark sky lighting standards. I don't know if that was. Um, Matt or Matthew or Taylor, but I just think it's great that you articulated it. Um, and I know that, um, we have in the, the approvals that we're going to see. Um, what the lighting will look like and, um, they can present at that time. It's compliance with these standards. I'm very grateful for that.
Yes.
Yeah.
We'll also have. Oh, David, please go ahead.
No, I, I know it's late and I, um. I was hoping just to take a look at each page and if we, our team can just quickly scan it, if we were. In the room together, we would have already done it.
Oh, you haven't seen these yet?
Well, we have. Uh, I just want to make sure that they're consistent with what we, you know.
Let's, no, no, let's, let's do that.
So.
Let's, let's.
The first page, I can, I've already looked at almost all of them.
Okay, let's. You tell us when you need to move.
Great, thank you.
Dave, would it be helpful if I send an email over to your team quickly too? I, I do want to make sure that you get.
Yeah.
That you, that you see it.
No, you're.
Well, I guess I can't do that if I'm sharing.
No, you're good. You're fine. Um, this page is good. I'm ready for the next. Through. We've already talked about a bunch of them, so. I'm sure my team will speak up if there's anything, but so far. I'm good through fifteen.
So, yeah, the applicant shall work with the select board to do attempt to reduce exterior onsite parking. Exterior on, to, for the purpose of increasing the area dedicated to landscaping and green space. Okay. To attempt.
Okay, I'm good through twenty-three. I'm good through, yeah, twenty-four is good, twenty-five.
The, the last two may be new to your teams. It's the last time you saw.
Yeah, the community engagement piece is obviously not a problem. Matt, go ahead. Sounds like you've got.
Yes, I'm sorry. So Matt Lawler, Robinson and Call Council for the development team. I'm just twenty-seven incorporating the LDA and the lease into the decision. Um. To me, that seems unusual.
I don't think it's unusual. I do that kind of stuff all the time, Matt. That's my addition. I mean, you gotta. I think it's helpful to cross-reference them, uh, honestly. I mean, it's an agreement. You gotta comply with it, so.
Yeah, I, we gotta comply with it in order to maintain the rights to the property and, uh, lease in full force and effect, I'm, yeah.
I mean, it's surplusage in a way, but it, to me, it's just a marker that, that is on the record, so. Um, it doesn't have to be said to compel, require, uh, compliance anyway. To me, though, it's just helpful. To broadcast to those that are interested and that need a roadmap on what you're complying with here, so. It doesn't. Require you to, to adhere to any additional requirements or anything new.
Yeah.
It's just restating the obvious.
Yeah.
I do that whenever I have projects that have a companion, um, development agreement, I always do that.
Okay.
Alright. And. Just related to number twenty-six, I think we just want to make it clear. Uh, that. It's. It's related to our project. I don't want.
Oh, we're gonna sneak that in so you do the whole time, yeah.
Well, we've got a really big project up over there on the triangle. We thought you could help us with.
So, so Jay, do you want to, do you want to suggest language to assuage the concern, sir?
Yeah, we can put some, we could put a, a word or two after infrastructure, um. You know, required by the project or in the project plans or anything like that. That's fine. We just add a word or two. I, I don't think anyone would reasonably require you to, for you to do converse places, infrastructure or anything like that.
We're already, yeah, the tentacles sometimes tend to creep though, so.
Yeah, no, no, we, we can add a, a word or two. No big deal.
Alright.
Okay, so we have these.
I'm also grateful for the person who put number twenty-eight in, because I think that that's key. To the ongoing goodwill of our community. Whoever did that was. Gets thanked.
Okay, so in addition to those as. Stated, we have a couple of amendments that I'm just gonna read out again, just so that we can all. Because we're gonna vote on this as amended. So, uh, one amendment is on the screen, number twenty-six. To clarify that the, uh, offsites or an infrastructure are related to this project.
Dave has his hand up.
I, can I make one, uh, additional change to that, which is? We may, um. It, it, it is a possibility that the state. Says that we should seek. Public infrastructure funds for some of that work. Um, because this is a, an affordable housing project, they'll start cobbling together. Funds from all over, so I just wanted to be clear. That. You know, the applicant's sole cost and expense, um. We may use. Public funds for that. Just, I don't know that, that needs to be articulated here, but I.
We could state the converse, that it's not going to be the Town of Winchester's funds.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so then we will amend number twenty-six. To say all offsites, sewer and infrastructure related to this project will be completed. Will. Shall be completed without, not at the town's expense.
Right, I, I can, I can get that language by the morning when we get, I know that there's some other tweaking here and Taylor can get me it in the morning and I'll, I'll.
Yeah.
I'll do just six.
Good.
Okay, so that, that we're clear on that amendment to twenty-six. We have an amendment to twenty-three. Which adds in the fact that we are attaching the design review comments. And the development team response, and that's going to be part of number twenty-three. Um, we have the. Applicant shall coordinate with the select board any use of adjacent public ways for parking or loading. Uh, we also have another one. Applicant shall provide signage plan as part of the final construction plan to direct primary. I'm sorry, parking, drop off. Deliveries and loading. And finally, applicant shall. Consult with the. Fire Department and Engineering Department. To see if buffering along the church street process, property line is possible. I should say practical. It's practical. It's practical. Many things are possible, but not practical. Okay, um, anything else from the planning board? If not, then I think our next move is to. Um, vote these conditions in, so we would be voting. To approve the. Special permit for CBD eighteen with these conditions.
So moved.
Okay, and is there a second?
Now second it.
Okay, let us go around the circle, um Sally.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
Yi Ching.
Hi.
And I say I as well. Um. This is an amazing moment for Winchester, um, and uh that's about all I can say about it right now, thank you all. It's very much for your patience. It's been a long process um for this town. Reaching back four years or so.
More.
Um, and for more, and I I think this is just gonna be such an amazing project, um. And it's gonna help out a lot of people, any, if the board wishes to chime in, by all means, go ahead.
Well, I can just say thank you to the entire development team. Um, and to Dennis Carlon and all the other peer reviewers for getting us so far. Um, and to all the people that participated in creating the CBD zoning. In two thousand sixteen that brought us to this PUD development today. Um, which I know Dennis was a big part of, um, and just a lot of thank yous go all around.
Yeah, I agree, there's, there's been so many people working hard on it, going back ten years or so, with people identifying this. Parcel as a possibility for this, and this is one of our first um private public. Um, collaborations and and helping us get more for housing in town. Um, I really appreciate all the housing advocates that were really engaged, the former housing trust, the housing partnership. Um, a lot of just grassroots folks, um, making sure that the town got a better deal out of this and and. And get a great design out of it, and so it's it's been a huge thing, and it's such an honor to be um voting yes tonight for this.
Agree.
Okay, um. On that note, um, thank you all very much. And I think that all of us are ready for a motion to adjourn.
Well, we have to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To table the other agenda items.
Oh my.
Do you do you wanna ask the development team if they have any questions or want to say any statements themselves?
Taylor, you asked the question.
I I think we'll just, I will just, we we know we're standing between you and turning off, so we'll just say thank you for your. And we're gonna keep working with you guys for a long time, and we can't wait to get this thing built, so it's a huge milestone to get this. In and we're we're thrilled and uh we'll keep working with it, so. We'll see you soon.
Yes.
Cool, okay, so so is.
So I I do I move to close the the hearing at this time?
By all means, move to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call, uh, Nick.
Hi.
Yi Ching.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
And I say I as well, okay, now we have to vote to table, we have never voted to table, but is there a motion to table the rest of our agenda?
Well, I I didn't mean to just have a motion, but we should quickly discuss, there's a very time-sensitive. Item on the agenda that was gonna be discussed at nine, which I thought was really unrealistic. Um, but with the best of intentions typing it in. Um, so we should have a conversation as a board about how we're gonna keep that back, get that back on track, I'm not sure we can do that at ten thirty at night.
No, we can't.
We can't, um, we will, we will do scheduling um tomorrow.
Okay, so.
I think we need a motion to adjourn, in fact, I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Nick.
Hi.
Yi Ching.
Hi.
Uh, Carrie.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
And I say I as well, so thanks again to everyone, thanks to all of the Winchester residents who joined us remotely. And who will be seeing this on YouTube and via wind cams delayed. Taping, thanks to uh all of our consultants, thanks to, where are you, Matt, are you still here, our town engineer, Matt Schuman? Uh, thanks to our recording secretary, Nancy Paul Curry, thanks to town council Jay Tellerman, thanks to our town planner. Who are you this evening, you're Taylor this evening, thanks to Taylor, um, thanks to everyone out there in TV land. Uh, we will see you sooner than you think. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.